Good evening, welcome to the school committee meeting on March 12th. It is 6:04 PM. All rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. Alright, as with every meeting, we just need to start with a little bit of housekeeping. So on March 29th, 2023, Governor Haley signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which among other things extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting laws to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at the meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration time of the temporary provisions, remote meetings from March 31st, 2023 to March 31st, 2025. Notice is hereby given that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on audio and video. Alright, roll call for attendance because we do have one member joining us via Zoom tonight.
Mayor Garcia. Ms. Brunel.
Here.
Ms. LaFave.
Present.
Mr. Romero.
Yeah.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Present.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Present.
Dr. Caballero.
Presente.
Mr. Wallahan.
Here.
Mr. Colomore.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Alright, so we're gonna start the meeting tonight with our student showcase. Um, we're excited to welcome the Hoyokai School Dean Campus Wrestling Team, and uh, they won the MIAA 2024 Sportsmanship Award. So, welcome gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Soto, did you have anything you want to say to introduce them?
No.
Oh, and ladies, I'm so sorry. I did not realize. My deepest sincerest apologies for that. That's arse.
No, I don't know if, uh, I think, uh, we have, uh, Mr. Solano here who's the assistant principal, uh, who's probably just gonna talk a little bit about, uh, the character of this team and, and the award that they won so that everyone understands, uh, what it means, but I can tell you, uh, right off the bat that I'm extremely proud of every single one of you. This is an award that just speaks to the character of our students and who they are as people. Um, and in Holyoke Public Schools, you know, one of the things that we, we strive for is to make sure that, uh, students are ready for, for career, for, uh, college, but most importantly, for life and, and you all receiving this award just really says that, uh, it says a lot about you guys really being ready to, to just be good people in general and to have strong sportsmanship and to pick each other up and to be collaborative. And I'm just extremely proud of, of all the, uh, all of that and you guys receiving that award. So I'll bring up Vin so that he can, he can just speak a little bit about his team.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm not really sure exactly where to stand. I think I see myself on camera, but... Alright, great. Uh, I think you said it best, Mr. Soto. Uh, we strive to prepare our student athletes for life itself. Uh, wrestling is, uh, hard enough, right? But life is even harder. So we like to prepare ourselves through training, through mindset, and through a team. Uh, Bella, you have the award there. I'll just showcase it real quick. You wanna come up and hold it for me? Thank you. Uh, this was a small goal at first. Uh, we had not known it would be a possibility when I first started coaching a few years back, uh, and then it turned into a bigger goal and now, or this year, it was actually our, our goal to achieve an award like this. Um, I made a small joke to be, uh, kinda spamming the MIAA to let them know how great we are as a team and, um, it's not just my voice. There was a lot of people from the community, the wrestling community saying how proud they were to see Holyoke growing. This isn't our full team. Uh, we have plenty more and we're growing even faster. We do graduate quite a bit of seniors. Seniors, if you can give a quick wave, we're really proud of you. And our assistant coaches in the back who are much more than assistants and volunteers. So again, thank you all for, uh, having us come down here today. Uh, we really appreciate it. We're really proud of our wrestlers and you'll see a lot more of us.
Awesome, thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
I do.
Um, I think I saw Ellie Wilson first. Oh, Mr. Moy- uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Colomore.
Yes, uh, first of all, congratulations to all of you, not just the, not just the team, the school in general. Because over the years, I've been watching sports for many, many years. It's just a wonderful feeling that you get the sportsmanship award. Because that, in my opinion, and I've strived for this for many, many years, sportsmanship award. Because that is what really helps our school system and Western Mass team. I'm not sure, but I believe this is the first wrestling team in our school system that received a sportsmanship award. I know we've received it in basketball and baseball. I'm not sure of other sports, but I know that wrestling is really one of our top sports today.
We, so, we did receive it a while back when Dean Tech had the, the team by itself and they had Hoyokai kids come down under the Dean Tech name. We had also received a sportsmanship award from the referees two years ago, but it was very small. But this by, by far, it, out of the, I believe it's 384 or 85 sanctioned wrestling teams, the MIAACs, uh, we are the only team to receive that this year and that's how that award works. So it is very special. Thank you. Notice we had another hand up.
Oh, I, I have an order, sorry.
Gotcha.
Uh, Ellie?
So it's just so amazing to see how many people are here, present, who are, are taking part in the wrestling team. And I know for many of you, you probably never officially wrestled, you know, prior to joining this team, and I think it's really amazing what, uh, commitment the coaching staff has put into developing this team of individuals and you yourselves to growing yourselves not only as an individual, but also to support each other and to really just strive for excellence. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Caballero?
Well, too, I won't reiterate all the praises and, um, but I would say, would like to say congratulations. Congratulations because that's a community effort and that's leadership. And that's also not only the support of all the staff, but the support of your families and your friends. And that's the trust that they deposited in you so that you become and continue to work on, on being the leaders, efficient leaders of this city. You've put, you know, another, again, another spotlight on school, uh, systems here in Holyoke and, uh, for that, please, I really congratulate, uh, all of you. Continue the good job and, uh, please don't let that spirit of unity and communion, you know, go away from, from that sportsmanship award. Thank you so much for what you've done. Thanks.
Mr. Soto?
Uh, I was gonna ask how many, how many wrestling teams won it in the state, but you answered that question. But, uh, Ms. Brunel brought up a good point. She asked if, if we already have a banner for this, but if we don't, Vin, I'd love to, to make sure that we get a banner and recognize, uh, this wrestling team for being awarded that sportsmanship award and make sure that we have it in both the Hoyokai, uh, North Campus Gym and the Hoyokai Dean Gym.
We would love that.
Dr. Rivera Cologne? She's on the screen.
I just wanna say again, congratulations. This is amazing. And as the body that we are, that we educate the community, for those at home and everybody who will see this maybe later, what are the qualifications for a team to win this award? What was, what did it entail so that we can continue to kinda like let everybody know how awesome this team is?
That's a really great question. And to be honest, I was in the same camp with your question when we were being nominated for this thing. How did we receive this? So, uh, we do need to be nominated by several school leaders. Uh, on top of that, the MIAA does some digging and they look into if you've had any, uh, infractions, which are negative things, and our team has had none. And what that really means is it comes down to each match. If a student athlete has a really hard time and says or does some actions, we, that are negative, again, we didn't have any of that this year whatsoever. Uh, and we really strive to make sure we thank people after each match, thank our opponent, thank our referees, and just show gratitude because without them, we would not have a sport. And those are the reasons why we became nominated for this award, uh, that I've been slowly learning about behind the scenes. But thank you for that question. Hopefully I answered it well enough.
Thank you. That gives us more opportunities to brag about our team. So I appreciate you. Congratulations.
Mrs. Tensley-Williams?
We are so proud of you guys. Um, I came from a family of 10 siblings, uh, six girls and four boys, and we used to bust our brothers up. We played, we played football, basketball. Mom, they're hurting us. We, we would jack them up. So we are so proud of you guys. So anything you need from us, don't hesitate to call on us.
Truly appreciate that, thank you.
Very welcome.
Sorry for your brothers.
Thank you guys all so much for coming. If I could get you guys to all come up, we'd love to take a, a picture real quick before you guys all take off. Um, and if any of the students have anything you guys want to say or add about your experiences or anything, feel free to chime in if you'd like, if there's a captain who represents you or anything.
Derek.
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 Hey guys, how's it going?
Good.
Good.
It's an honor to be here.
Thanks, Derek.
Uh, I just wanted to say that this sport will make or break you, to be honest. And with that being said, it's not something that you can pretend to love, you know? Like, it's really a family. Without these guys, it'd be a pretty difficult road getting through, you know, school. Um, other than that, I just wanna say we have like an amazing coaching staff. Without these guys, we'd have no Holyoke, to be honest. And, um, other than that, you know, I'm, I'm a senior and it's gonna be sad to leave this team, but you know, it's always gonna be an amazing opportunity to see them perform. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Sure, I guess we'll get in the pictures. I guess we're... Hold on, we got more coming in. Wait for us. We're slow behind. We're a little slow. We're mighty. Watch out. We're gonna pull you up.
Alright, moving right along. I don't see anyone signed up for public comment. I didn't get any emails. Um, so communication reports, we have our student reports. We do have our Hoyokai School North Campus Student Representative today. Um, and so you can take it away. Don't forget to introduce yourself.
Alright, uh, my name is Nicholas Rodriguez.
Is it green?
Alright, um...
Go, thank you, honey.
No problem. Uh, my name is Nicholas Rodriguez, the HHS North Student Representative. Um, in the month of March so far, our school has had a spring into your academy field trip plan where, um, we essentially had like an orientation for each of our academies. Uh, they were given the choices of three colleges that were selected for like, for, um, if they aligned towards their academy, like what they were after. You had three colleges for the Engineering and Life Sciences Academy, three colleges for the Community and Global Studies Academy, and three colleges for the Reform, for the Performing and Media Arts Academy. Um, the Hoyokai redesign team consisting of five students and administrators, uh, teachers and counselors met the plan, met the plan for the shift to block scheduling for the 2024 to 2025 school year. Mark Mastreoni, the US District Court Judge for the District of Massachusetts, came in to speak to, to our community and global study students about his experiences as a judge and the criminal justice system itself. The Hoyokai School Theater Company will be putting on the play My Fair Lady at the beginning of April. I'll be coming to see it. In preparation for the ELAMCAS, uh, sophomores were asked to participate in games and events to help prepare themselves. The national, or an assembly was held to review national, the National Society Honors, sorry. An assembly was held to review National Honor Society information with our students. Uh, over, over 40 students were invited based on their initial, initial eligibility to participate and were encouraged to apply for this prestigious accolade. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. And I know we have, um, somebody sitting in for Mr. Kennedy tonight, so if you could introduce yourself and then give us the report for the Dean Campus.
Goodne- good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Burgos, a 10th grader from health assisting here at Dean, and I will be acting as the Dean Campus Student Representative. Let's get into these updates. Dean Tech's applications process closed with over 300 8th grade applications. Letters of... Letters of acceptance were sent out on Wednesday, February 28th of 2024, to 110 rising 9th graders. Feb- February is a career of Technical Education Month and Mr. McCalliffe, our CTE Director, celebrated it by holding the, the Dean's first CTE student cabinet meeting with shop repres- representatives. A representative from each grade level met with the director to, to shop director to discuss questions, issues, comments, or concerns about CTE program and of their shops. Class, class of 2027 and 2025 are currently selling class t-shirts. In February, Dean passed the total of co-op can- candidate, candidates from 2022 to 2023 school year. Student co... Cooperative Education Work-Based Learning placements with 21, 21 juniors and seniors placed. Shovel, several more new placements are currently being finalized. They have been placed at Miguel's Auto Collision Repair, Hoyokai Center, Hoyokai Medical Center, Mount Marie Nursing, Professional Drywall, and Col- Colican Office, just, just to name a few. Dean programs are open to the public of service. If you want to see that, see, to see what Dean students are capable of in their selective fields, then be sure to fill out the form at deancte.com to request a service. So far, we have five students who have earned the seal of b- bili literacy. Still waiting on more results to come in. We have tripled our numbers from last year. Here are a few important senior dates. Prom will be held at... Wycoff Country Club on Thursday, May 23rd at 5:30. Class day will be on Thursday, May 23rd at 8, 8:15 AM. Senior breakfast and graduation rehearsal will be May, will be May 29th at 8 o'clock AM. Senior trip will be on May 20, May 28th to Brownstone Water Park. Graduation will be on May 30th at 5:30 here in the gym.
Thank you so much. Great job. Speaking in front of everybody is never easy, so we appreciate your efforts. Good job. Alright, moving right along, vice chair reports. I just have a receivership update, which is not much. Um, Mayor Garcia and myself have a Zoom meeting with the new interim commissioner on Friday. Um, you all received my comments and response to it not being a full meeting. So I've shared my thoughts on that. I've shared my thoughts with him many times and I've requested their attendance at our 20, March 25th meeting and was told it will be discussed at our Zoom meeting on Friday, so stay tuned. Anybody have any questions about that? Dr. Caballero?
What was the reason, if he gave any, uh, why he's not having a full meeting with us?
I didn't get a response to my official comment about it. I guess, I, I really don't have an answer. Hold up, Ms. Tensley-Williams? We cannot because that would be, uh, a quorum, which would make it a full meeting, which would mean it would need to be publicized. Um, so, you know, Josh and I will have this conversation with him. I'll keep it as brief as possible, of course, and, you know, try not to go into too much detail without it being... And then ultimately, the goal is to try to get him to come to the 325. So I haven't even constructed an agenda for that meeting yet because I figure if he comes, we'll pretty much dedicate the whole meeting for that. Um, so, our Zoom is on, on Friday afternoon. Gustavo, did you have a question or a comment? No, I'm sorry, I thought I saw your hand. Anybody else? Alright, moving right along. Um, superintendent receiver reports, Mr. Soto, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel, and, and I'm hoping, today, uh, we wanted to open up the superintendent report, uh, to, for, and give an opportunity for folks that are on the teacher retention work group to present to the school committee, um, their, their report that they, uh, that included recommendations that were made to me, uh, to address the, the teacher retention. So I wanna thank all of them and, and everybody who's here to present, everybody who is not here and probably listening online or couldn't be here, but a lot of work went into that report and I'm excited to share, to, to create some space for some teachers to, to share, uh, the recommendations. I also have Erin Linville, who is, is online, and Dr. Mahoney will be, uh, coming up to, uh, with, with two teachers that we have here, I believe, uh, Jill and Carolyn.
As I should do myself.
Uh, good evening. Uh, we're delighted to be here. I, I think I'll have, uh, Jill and Carolyn introduce themselves first and then, uh, we'll be able to walk you through, uh, the presentation. So first up, Carolyn.
Hi, my name's Carolyn Montero. I'm, uh, an English Language Development Teacher at Hoyokai North. I've only been here at Hoyokai since this past August. I worked for Hoyoke Public Schools, um, back in 2009, 2008, I think, through 2013 and then moved out of state for 10 years. Um, so I just came back this summer and wanted to come right back to Hoyoke because I loved my job then. So here I am.
Hi, um, I'm Jill Byer-Hamel and I am a special education teacher at Ian White. I've been in the district for almost six years and additionally to being a teacher in Hoyoke, I also have my own two children who attend Hoyoke Public Schools, so I have a dual interest in our work.
Yes, Mrs. Soto, if you could put the presentation up, that'd be great. Yes, I can, sorry. I am the unofficial tech lead for the cabinet, so, uh, so that was an easy... Uh, share it with you as well, Mr. Heinz? Uh, I... Oh, oh, you, you've got it ready to go. Great. Okay. My kind is much more official in that capacity than I am. That's great. And Mr. Heinz, if you wanna go... There, perfect. Okay. Uh, Mr. Heinz, you can go to the next slide? Great, thank you. Um, so tonight, uh, I am, uh, going to walk, uh, you all through the, uh, purpose and the process, uh, and then Carolyn is going to talk about the need. Jill will talk about the work we did on root causes and then I'll try to bring it home with recommendations and next steps. Next slide, please, Mike. I think it's important for us to, to ground, uh, that our work, uh, came from the superintendent's strategic plan, um, which you all know was, was, uh, had, uh, intense amount of staff, uh, and community and student involvement, uh, in preparing. Um, we, uh, we want to be the best fit district, uh, for educators, um, and we want to be able to, uh, put together a plan to increase teacher retention because that is, um, uh, a really clear and present challenge, uh, for Hoyoke Public Schools. Next slide, please, Mr. Heinz. The process that we had for the teacher retention working group was, uh, a very, uh, involved and inclusive process. Um, we had, uh, 21 educators and leaders, including, uh, a, a member of the school committee, Ms. Wilson, uh, was on our group and, uh, who's able to bring multiple perspectives and, and, um, not only did we have these 21 educators, uh, and, and leaders, uh, but we also, um, used surveys, focus groups, we brought it to standing groups like our teacher advisory, um, uh, uh, group. We interviewed former teachers to find out why they left, um, the district. Uh, we had, um, uh, all of our cabinet members and all of our principals and their leadership teams weighed in on it, um, as well. So we, we tried to have as inclusive a process as possible so that we could understand, uh, the challenge and the root causes as much as possible. Next slide, Michael? Um, and for here, I'm gonna turn the, uh, wheel over to Carolyn to talk about the need.
Okay, I'm gonna, I have some notes on my computer, so that's why I'm gonna be looking down. I wanna make sure that I don't miss anything, but basically, I'm just gonna be speaking to the slides that you all have and that, that are up. You can go, go to the next one? Um, perfect. Okay. So, the annual retention, teacher retention rate has really fluctuated, um, gone between 71% and 81% over the past 10 years or so. The, the dotted red line that you see are pre-receivership numbers, which tend to be the higher numbers. You see a drop right after receivership and then kind of a, um, fluctuation down. The two kind of sp- spikes, um, for, um, 20 and 21 were COVID years. So during that time, um, you know, the assumption is that everyone was kind of laying low. Um, not a lot of changes during that time. Um, sorry, I have some chats coming in from science teachers. So this past year, um, our retention rate was 77%, which is relatively high compared to other years. But I think to try to put that in real terms for everyone, what that really means is that one out of every five teachers left last year. One out of every five. And that's a much more real number to me than saying 77% were retained, right? So when you walk down the hall at Hoyokai, one, two, three, four, gone. You know, it, it's a little mind blowing. Um, it seems like a lot when you think of it in terms of real numbers. Um, so as we worked on this project, we all were really, um, you can change the slide. We were all really intent on trying our hardest to get to the bottom of it. You know, I think that that's something that's really important. We did a lot of brainstorming about how we could get underneath this issue. So overall, our retention rate is lower than the state's average and many comparison districts, with the exception of Southbridge, which I just found out today, is also in receivership. Um, uh, they are consistently, consistently lower than we are. Um, and Lawrence actually had lower numbers than us this past year, too.
And they're also in receivership.
There we go. Okay. That I didn't know. Um, in, in 2023, we were only four... In 2023, we were only four points behind Springfield, just as a point of comparison. And you can advance the slide. So this slide is kind of telling. It shows the years of service in the city of Hoyoke. Not overall career experience, but years of service in the city of Hoyoke. We were surprised when we looked at these kind of raw numbers to see that 288 teachers this past year were in their first three years of working in Hoyoke Public Schools. That's more than half of our overall teachers in the district were in their first three years. So it really, it really shows how many veteran teachers just aren't here anymore. And the cumulative impact of the kind of turnover that we are trying to prevent, right? Because it just kind of flows out over the chart. Another little nugget there is 18% of teachers have greater than a year of experience. And 51%, wait, isn't that supposed to be less than three years? Less than three years' experience? Yeah. 27% of teachers are six-plus. Okay. You can advance. All right, and this is another kind of surprising number that between 2021 and 2023, we looked at the number of teachers who left. We looked at all the teachers who left, and we found that 151 teachers left in their very first year before their first year, you know, ended before, like by the end of their first year. So 151 teachers, which I think is about, almost a third, left before finishing out the year or at the end of their, that contract year. And we looked at that, and we really talked about, what does that mean, right? And we agreed that either we're not adequately supporting teachers in the district, they are leaving for some unknown reason, or we're struggling to hire the right type of teachers from the get-go, right? We know that there's basically a shortage of teachers everywhere. And so it's really hard to be super picky when you're faced with a teacher shortage. And we talked about how much of those people who weren't going to be returning, maybe people who we may not have wanted to return, right, necessarily? Some of those people might have been counseled out. It wasn't all just like, bye, I'm gone, and oh, we wish you could stay. You know, that's always a part of it. But that's a diverse group of teachers in that first year. Just like any other employment, some employees fit and some employees don't. But this is a pretty high number. The next slide? Feel free to interrupt. I think, maybe not, if you want to ask a question, if that's procedurally okay?
How many more slides do you have?
I have, I think this is my last.
All right, we'll let you finish, and then we'll open up.
I have, I have two more.
Okay.
So you want me to just finish up this?
Yeah, thank you.
So which one are we on? Workload? Oh, you can move one more. No, no, back. Are we missing a slide? Back one more, that one. Okay. So we surveyed the teachers who are here presently. We had a 76% return rate, which is a pretty good return rate for a survey. And we asked them, have you considered leaving Hoyoke Public Schools? And if so, which factors most significantly would impact that decision, right? And they had 21 things to choose from. So the top five, I just want to scroll down so I can see my notes a little bit better, were workload and/or work-life balance, student behavior, salary, pay, district leadership, and work hours. When, within focus groups, we asked teachers to give more information about that, about their responses, and we tried to elicit anecdotal information from as many people as humanly possible. And we want to point out that the district leadership answer, we found, really came from teachers feeling like the district leadership could do more to help all those other things, right? Could do more to help with student behavior. Could do more to help teachers with work-life balance and not feel so pressured. To do more to support teachers in what they need for their work-life balance or their working hours. So, you know, it's important just to remember that any time you ask about these kind of issues, you're always going to get like, my administrator or my my district doesn't necessarily support what I need. But they did qualify that. And definitely, people are looking for leadership in those areas, in those top five. Factors that did not come into the top 10, which I think are also important, is families, teacher colleagues, pace of change, values misalignment, instructional approaches, district policies. Those things didn't make it. The commute, the calendar year, those things didn't make it to the top 10. Okay, you can go to the next slide. And then this slide is about when we surveyed the teachers who left. So we surveyed the teachers who have left voluntarily, I think, over the last two years, or anybody who left over the past two years. Out of 200 requests, we got 50 responses, which Erin felt was pretty decent. Okay, so about a quarter. There were 18 possible choices for them to respond, and the top reasons were school leaders, student behavior, workload and work-life balance, district leadership, and work hours/salary pay. We found that school leaders showed up in this particular category. It didn't show up in the current, current teacher category when we surveyed current teachers. And we, you know, dug into that a little bit more to try to see where that came from. And what we found was when people explained their answers, they really were talking about the response that school leaders had in really challenging situations, particularly involved with involving student behavior. Like, teachers felt like they weren't being supported necessarily or in that way by school leaders. And it was that feeling of lack of support that had them put school leaders up there. So that's it. There's a lot more data, like, in the report that you're welcome to dig into, or I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. And if not, Jill, just move along.
Before I open it up for questions, I'd just like to say it would have been nice to have this in advance of the meeting, so that way we could have gone through it and prepared questions or information ahead of time. So we need to have all of the presentations in the school committee packet when we get it, please, because we could have, you know, done some homework and prepared questions.
I thought you had it.
No.
No? Oh, okay.
It's not attached to the packet.
Ah.
But that's not your responsibility.
Gotcha.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Carolyn, yeah. So about 25, you know, somewhere between around 20 to 25%.
We can hear Ms. Tensley-Williams' question.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Okay. You want me to repeat it?
Yes, please, for the record.
Okay. The ratio of, I just asked her how many teachers left. She said one out of five, yeah?
Yes, approximately. So last year, it was a 77% retention rate. And we've been kind of vacillating between 71 and 81. So it's approximately one out of five, a little bit more or a little bit less.
And they didn't just walk away. There were reasons for that. So you explained a lot of the reasons why they left.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, hon.
Mr. Soto?
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. On the slides where it talked about teachers leaving prior to their first year, I believe the top of the slide said it was over a two-year period, and I just want to, to make sure that that's actually the case and that it wasn't... No, I think it was 151 teachers. That wasn't in one year. That was over the course of a couple of years.
Correct. It was 2021 to 2023. And it was 151 that left in the first year, in their first year of service. Like, but before the, they didn't renew their contract, let's put it that way. Yeah.
Yeah.
Over, yeah, over two years.
And this presentation was linked into the packet.
I didn't get it either.
It's in the report. There's a link. That's fine, though.
I take that back, then, because I apologize. I looked for it, and I didn't see it, and you're right, it's below it. My apologies. I was looking for a link, so. Ms. Wilson, please.
So I think the key takeaway is that some of the things we're seeing is not just Hoyoke Public Schools. You know, as a country, we're seeing higher levels of discipline throughout, you know, levels of school. That is probably the number-one reason that people are leaving teaching. So I'm thinking right now, which is always hindsight is always, you know, better than what we're doing now, is like finding out, did people leave teaching altogether? Or did they just leave Hoyoke Public Schools? Because many educators are choosing to leave the teaching profession due to the lack of, and I'm going to use the term "respect", that's cited amongst many educators. And then the other thing that I was going to add to that is that, you know, discipline's an issue, and it's... And I think many times, students are being effectually managed, but that information may not get back to the teacher, and that is critical. Otherwise, teachers are perceiving that nothing is happening. You know, the stories of kids coming back to, you know, always on those cute little videos on Instagram or other things, it's a kid gets sent to the principal. What do they do? They come back to the class with a lollipop. You know, kind of situation where we're not really seeing the work that's being done, whether it's a conversation, whether it's a mediation, whether it's a teacher-student meeting where the disagreement is rectified or mediated to some sort of satisfaction. But these, I have to say, it's not just Hoyoke. What I think is Hoyoke is the work hours. I think that is a key contributor to student, to our teachers leaving. And so it's something that we need to look at. And personally, I'm quite disgusted when I look at the slide of long-term teachers who are no longer in our district. I, myself, am one of them. That I no longer teach in Hoyoke for a variety of reasons. And other teach, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to call myself this, but I know significantly, there are significant number of educators who are dedicated, were dedicated, and continue to be dedicated to their students. They call them their kids. It's not their students. These are their children, who have left the district because they could not manage some of the dictates that have come down from hierarchy, as well as, you know, some of the expectations are just completely unreasonable. So I'll, that's the end of mine.
Mr. Willoughby?
Thank you. Yeah, just to follow up on what Mrs. Wilson said. One of the, one of the slides mentioned the number of first-year stu, first-year teachers. But I know, you know, since the pandemic, we just, you know, nationwide, there's just been a massive retirement of teachers, right? I mean, that's just a fact. So that's probably one of the reasons why there's so many first-year, first-year teachers coming in, you know, just because of the vacancies. I know from talking to some of the principals, just the pool of applicants is just down. I know only here in Western Mass, but in the Boston area, in the past, you would have 10 or 12 outside candidates trying to fill a spot. You'd have a couple internal candidates trying to fill a spot, and those numbers are just way down. So, you know, some people might want to join the teaching profession. They might not think it's for them, and they might leave. So, and again, back to the nationwide, just the job market nationwide. You can do these surveys for any profession, I would say, in the country. Accountants, you know, real estate agents, et cetera, et cetera. The numbers are just down, you know, just a mass exodus of workers in the job pool nationwide. It's very concerning, as Mrs. Wilson said, that we don't retain the number of teachers year to year. I know when I was in Hoyoke High, you know, the questions were, who are you getting for history this year? Who are you getting for math? You knew the teachers. You knew who your choices were, and they weren't really new, new names or new faces. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to call on Mr. Collmore, and then we're going to continue, because I guess that's only a third of the presentation. So we want to keep moving this along at a clip. Mr. Collmore?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss salaries in our school system.
We can't really discuss teacher salaries. That's collective bargaining and not something that we're really involved with.
Now, just on the whole, I'm talking about other districts compared to Hoyoke. There should be some comparison throughout Western Mass or even the state that says Hoyoke is very, very low in teacher salaries. Is that the, is that some of the reasons they're leaving our system? Is because of salaries in our system?
Well, when you see the survey here, only 20% said salary and pay. The top reasons were school leaders, student behavior, workload or work-life balance, district leadership, work hours. We're all ahead of salary and pay. But there's got to be some kind of state report. Mr. Soto?
Yeah, I don't have the state report, but I will say the last round of negotiations with teachers, which next year will be the third, that analysis is always done. And we were, we were very competitive with surrounding districts when that happened. We looked at parts of the scale to make sure that where we weren't competitive, we addressed that in the salary for teachers. And on average, teachers got a, on average, teachers got a 10% increase from the scale from the previous contract. So obviously, since then, that was a couple of years ago, when that new contract went into effect. Some districts have renegotiated contracts. So like, when we, when we actually go to the table again next year, that's something that, you know, that is a process that our team will definitely go, go through, is taking a look at surrounding districts, what, where they're at, and making sure that we stay competitive and working with, you know, the union to go through that bargaining process.
And let's just talk discipline for a moment. I don't know how far we go within the school system, but are there more students not just leaving the system, but being shipped to the court system for improvement? for implementation of, uh, our policies?
I would have to say no to that, like, I, I actually visited the Hampden, Hampden County Sheriff's Department and he said, whatever work you guys have been doing over the last five years, like, I wanna commend you because we're seeing a lot less people enter our system. Um, you know, so I don't wanna create the, the perception that, that are, are, you know, that, you know, I, I just, I'm struggling with that question because, uh, that is not a representation of our students, right? Yes, we have student behaviors, we have unmet needs, but that does not mean that, you know, our students are on a path to, you know, to incarceration or anything like that. And the sheriff himself expressed to me like, look, you know, a long time ago, Holyoke, we, we were seeing a lot of kids, young, young adults, uh, entering our system and we're not seeing that anymore.
And just keep in mind too, uh, discipline data is in your packet every, every meeting as well if you have, want more information. So, okay, if you guys could continue.
Great, I'm gonna, uh, have Jill come to the mic, walk us through, uh, root causes and, uh, the first set of recommendations that came from, uh, the work group.
So, um, I will try and be as, as, um, succinct as possible. So, um, after we've reviewed the data, we conducted a root cause analysis and we found that the primary problem was that around twenty-five percent of teachers leave Holyoke each year. So, um, we looked at the unconscious bias in schools and there was a quote from that that said, too often, we think we understand the problem and identify solutions based on surface diagnosis. If we really want to get to the root, we need to dig deeper. So that is what drove our work in the, uh, teacher retention group. So, um, in looking at that primary problem, we had to think about the why, which were the sub-problems and we came up with three as a group. So the three were, one, the amount and breadth of expectations or workload for a teacher is too high. Teachers feel undervalued and underappreciated. Students' social, emotional needs are not being fully met, which leads to disruptive student behaviors in the classroom. Oh. Oh, yeah, that can go to the next slide. So, um, from that primary problem and our work in the retention group, we came up with some recommendations and you can go to the next slide. So this slide contains two of the sub-problems, which, um, we attacked together and found one corresponding strategy. So the sub-problems were that amount, amount and breadth of expectations and that teachers feel undervalued and underappreciated. And so the corresponding strategy that comes from that is that we need to create and foster a work environment where teachers are and feel supported, valued, appreciated, fairly compensated and successful. So from that strategy, we found sub-priorities, which in my mind, I think of the corresponding strategy is the how and then branching that out into some sub-priorities. So we listed those as prioritization and coordination, workday, professional learning, coaching and support, communication, compensation, appreciation, connection and wellbeing and recruiting. So as I said, that slide, um, touches on two of the sub-problems that we listed. You can go to the next slide. The third sub-problem that was identified was students' social, emotional needs are not fully being met, which leads to disruptive student behaviors in the classroom. So this one had its own corresponding strategy that we came up with and that was to strengthen school cultures and students' social, emotional learning and support systems. And to branch that strategy out, we came up with the ideas of, um, a multi-tiered system of support, which includes a system of SEL, behavioral and academic tier one, two and three supports, social, emotional learning and relationship building, student behavior supports and special education, I would add, support into there. Next slide. So this slide is strategy one, which spoke to those first two subcategories. Um, so the idea was to create and foster a work environment where teachers feel supported, valued, appreciated and so on. So we broke that down into, um, five recommendations. So compensation was at the top of that list and in negotiations with the HTA, explore ways to increase the competitiveness of teacher total compensation and benefits. And in my mind, the, um, word that sticks out most to me is competitiveness because if we're trying to keep teachers here, we need to look at the surrounding areas and really make ourselves competitive with the job market being what it is. The second on that list is workday and we said to modify the teacher workday to protect prep time, differentiate teacher, teacher learning, compete again with surrounding districts and promote work-life balance. The next one, um, spoke to compensation again and for this particular, um, recommendation, we said that we should revisit stipend range, ranges or hourly rates for additional duties, voluntary responsibilities and coverage due to absences to ensure equity and fairness within Holyoke and competitiveness with nearby districts. And, um, this really spoke to veteran teachers because the way that our salary schedule is set up right now, it really does support new teachers, which is surprising that we lose new teachers even still, but, um, if we can look at this, um, salary schedule and really think about how we're supporting teachers who have been here for more than three years and try and keep them. I think that's something that we need to, um, really dig into. Um, prioritization speaks to, um, developing an achievable list of responsibilities and expectations for teachers, which lends to that workload and, uh, work-life balance. And also limiting district and school priorities so that each grade band has a reasonable amount of new priorities. And a lot of the feedback that we got was that teachers felt like they just had work that kept on being added on and on and on and nothing was taken off of their plate. Um, I think that might be all from my portion because Mahoney is going to speak to strategy two.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Um, so strategy number two, uh, uh, went at the third sub-problem that, that Jill outlined, uh, which was to strengthen school cultures and social, emotional learning and support systems for students. Um, uh, we have several here. Um, uh, at the top is exploring some alternative programming for, uh, dysregulated, high, um, high-need students who, uh, tend to have an, uh, a disproportionate impact on, uh, classroom and school cultures. Um, second was to, uh, get back to our multi-tiered system of student support, review it, uh, revise it as, as, as necessary. It, the last time that we put together, uh, one, it was two years before the pandemic. Um, and it was before we did, um, our reconfiguration and rezoning into elementary, middle and high schools. So, um, that needs some, uh, serious, uh, it needs, uh, serious attention. Um, for behavior support to really have, uh, consistent, systemic and coherent responses, uh, to student behavior. Both proactive, what we expect, um, adults to be doing to promote, uh, healthy, uh, uh, behavior and, and students making productive, uh, uh, decisions, but also how we respond to it in ways that are clear and consistent for students and for families and for staff. Um, and that includes everything, not just what happens when, you know, uh, when, you know, um, uh, students refer to an administrator, but also being really consistent in the communication back to the gap that Ms. Wilson, uh, just noted, right? I may do great work with, uh, um, with, uh, with the student i- in, in my office, but if the teacher doesn't know about it, then they're, they were missing a key part. Um, uh, look at, uh, adjustments to special education staffing and supports, um, so that, um, and, and then which we are doing as a part of the strategic plan anyways, uh, but this was, uh, tagged in and overlapped with our work. And then finally, making sure that, uh, school schedules and, uh, programming, uh, have dedicated and, and, uh, protected time uh, for relationship building and for intentional, direct social, emotional learning. And then our next steps, um, thank you, Mike, next. Um, first is, uh, is to begin sharing and, uh, uh, this report and presentation to get feedback, input and ideally action. Um, and the report, um, has been shared, uh, with, uh, school leaders, it was shared with all staff, um, uh, this week, it was shared with, with you all, uh, last week in the board. I believe, uh, uh, Mrs. Soto has either shared this already, um, with our liaisons, uh, at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or, um, but they were, uh, very much in the know as we went through. Um, and then to start bringing it to, uh, family, uh, groups and to, uh, standing staff, uh, faculty meetings. Um, we've already begun, uh, much of, uh, of the work on, uh, the, uh, on these recommendations. So for example, uh, Jackie Gashin, Sarita Gravlin, Rebecca Thompson and I have taken a first cut at, um, prioritizing, uh, teacher responsibilities and expectations for first, second and then third year plus. We'll take another crack at it, uh, later this week and then start sharing it with an advisory group of school leaders and teachers that are going to be working with us on that. Um, MTSS work begins on, uh, on Friday, uh, with a, a, a design team of school counselors, deans of students, classroom teachers, um, and, uh, building and district, uh, leaders. And then, um, our goal is, uh, for us to have, uh, finalized actions, uh, and a plan for, uh, the superintendent to share in mid-May. Um, we are, our, our MTSS plan is to have a revised MTSS plan that schools can begin planning to turnkey it at our June leadership retreat. So that, um, schools will have the summer, uh, to prepare, uh, for, uh, any changes in systems and structures, uh, and practices in the building. And, uh, if there are other questions that the committee has, happy to take those, um, as you see fit.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mahoney. Uh, Ms. Wilson?
So I do have to say that one thing I heard very strongly from the group is having consistency for discipline. Um, that was huge amongst, uh, the group of individuals. Um, and so that students, especially because students are gonna be moving from elementary to middle schools now, um, and coming from different elementary schools, going to different middle schools, there needs to be the consistency of approach with how, um, you know, each situation is dealt with and managed. And that is not seen right now within our community. Um, and then I'm gonna say this, um, I think the work-life balance is, is very important. I think, um, I think it needs to be looked at, especially now because of the staffing shortage and how teachers are being called upon to staff vacancies um, and missing out on their preps, um, missing out on, you know, different times or duty time, whatever it is. Um, that should be built into their day. I, I think that we need to be thoughtful about what we're presenting at staff meetings after school. Um, I know many teachers find staff meetings, um, irrelevant, um, in, in many cases. And I would really challenge our administrators to be thoughtful and use the time wisely and not just have a meeting for the sake of having a meeting.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
What is that acronym for MTSS?
Yeah, thank you. It, uh, it stands for multi-tiered systems of support. Um, and what that means is that, uh, you have, uh, three areas of support that you'd be providing to students. Um, academic, behavioral and social and emotional. And that in each one of those domains, you have three tiers. So you have tier one, which is universal, you, you, every student has access to that and is provided to every student. So that is our illustrative math curriculum that every student is using. Uh, or, uh, that would be our, uh, code of conduct that, uh, that, um, drives decision-making when, when, in, in response to student behaviors. Well, that would be our trails curriculum that students in grades one through nine are getting, um, in, in all of our schools. And that's tier one. Tier two is generally when students need more than what you're giving in tier one. Tier two usually speaks to having smaller groups of students. Maybe need, uh, uh, specific work on, uh, phonics and phonetic understanding. Or need, uh, we have small groups that deal, uh, in behavior and social, emotional, that deal with everything from anger management to grief and, and, and helping students understand and, and go through the, um, that experience. And then the third tier oftentimes is, is much more individualized and personalized to, um, uh, specific students who have , um, very particular and, and unique circumstances and needs to their situation.
Thank you so much, that's great.
Dr. Caballero?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I had the opportunity to study, uh, your submission and, uh, actually took some time to go over different research, um, websites, uh, where they talk about ES, SEL, you know, social, emotional learning. And one of the recommendations is that why not integrate all those, you know, multi-tier, uh, approaches to the curriculum? And not only focusing on, you know, specific situations, but why not embed it into what we teach our children? You know, how we also, uh, engage with families and the community. So, uh, I guess when we talk about, well, um, how are we going to support our students to perform better in our schools? Um, SEL, social, emotional learning has to be, you know, a pivotal, you know, central part of that, uh, education. Uh, something else that I wanted to point out was a situation about, um, the lack of support that teachers feel from their administrators. Um, it saddens me that people leave their jobs because they don't feel supported or appreciated. Something that also affects the, the, not only the teaching, but the learning. Because there's an, an energy, uh, with which you go to your workplace and then how do you deliver the, the knowledge because you don't feel supported, appreciated? Um, what are we going to do with that, you know? The report, your report also talked about the lack of communication that was really, um, that would permeate the same information across the public schools. Why, why is there, uh, communication this way in this school and another school is doing something else? Um, so the lack of that, prioritizing a common language and a common approach to not only teaching, but also communicating with, um, with the staff and with the teachers. The report also talked about the, um, inconsistencies with the, um, professional development. Teachers are receiving professional development, uh, training that they have already taken. And I would propose, and why not integrate all these professional, uh, I mean, the language of social, emotional learning so that teachers and administrators are more, um, aware as to how to not only help themselves, but also help the, the, the students and, and the families. So that we have students that thrive and, and so that we learn self-control and learn where our strengths are. That all should be part of the curriculum and also part of the conversation that we as teachers and, you know, leaders in the city should be, uh, having. Thank you so much for, for, for all your work. Thank you.
Ms. LeFevre?
Thank you again for the presentation as well as for all the work that you guys have done on in the teacher retention working group. I'm gonna focus on strategy number two, um, the recommendations and, um, starting off first with your behavior support. The recommendation to explore alternative programming replacement options for dis- significantly dysregulated students who do not have an IEP, Individual Education Program. I didn't even get that far, my question. So I remember we've always had building-based support team. And when, if a student is having difficulty, obviously referrals are made, meetings are, are done with the family. And then if we need to do, uh, behavioral assessment, a functional behavioral assessment, it's done. Um, if we need to do an OT evaluation for sensory, it's done. Um, and we look at before getting to an IP, a 504 plan. And we look at before getting to an IP, a 504 plan. We also look at implementing a safety plan in there. Where would we be exploring alternative programming if we haven't done A, now all of a sudden we want to get to C? We've had things in place, it's just that we're not following the protocol, either because we don't want to make it look like we're really in any bad shape. But if I connect this, so when we talk later about the referrals from one month to the next, we have a problem. So, obviously, we're dropping the ball somewhere. And before doing a 45-day placement or a recommendation for that, I think the support should have came in a whole lot, long time way before that. So, I think we'd better go back to the basics and nipping this stuff in the bud before it gets to where we have dysregulated students who do not have an IEP. I also think that it shouldn't just be left to the teachers, shouldn't be left to the paraprofessionals. My question is, how are nurses involved in this? Right? How are we getting nursing involved? Because is the student on some sort of medication? Is there a change in the medication and now it's causing a chemical imbalance which now increases, you know, could be causing a manic episode? Got to reach out to the parent, to reach out to the doctor. There's a lot that could be going on, or it could be a medical issue, it could be a simple UTI, and we've got to get some antibiotics. That's where I have a problem there. Number two, strengthen this HPS system of support so every student receives the SEL. Every time I hear SEL, it's like that other word that came out a couple of years ago and it was like the hot word, and now this is like the hot ticket word, social emotional learning. I'm very curious. I'm a student. Can somebody please show me an SEL, I don't know, what you would do in social emotional If I'm a student, I'm in class, what are you specifically doing? And when exactly is this social emotional learning being done? Is it like...
I think the first thing is 15 minutes every day at each night.
Okay.
I just, I want to answer, and I'll let Dr. Mahoney answer. I think that a major shift that has to happen in Holyoke, and I'm not going to say that it, SEL is not just a place, it's not just, it doesn't happen just in morning meetings, like SEL is everybody's responsibility. And I think that, you know, Ms. Wilson was alluding to that. It's not, you know, it's, SEL happens in your ELA block, SEL happens in math, SEL happens in the hallways, SEL happened, SEL is everybody's responsibility. And you're absolutely right, it should, you know, it's not just on the teacher, it's on the student support team, it's on the admin. Like, SEL has to be an entire shift that it's not just our trails curriculum, which is our tier-one instruction of SEL that often happens in morning meetings. The shift has to really be that it is everybody's responsibility. And I'll let, I'll let Dr. Mahoney say what he was going to say.
Before you go there, that's exactly the point that I'm trying to make, is that this shouldn't be, well, let's do this 10-minute little activity. It's just like processing an incident, right? If a student has an incident, we need to process it, right? Because the student needs to learn, identify your trigger, right? Because then we all have to keep in mind, and it shouldn't, again, it shouldn't just be the teacher, everybody. Because that same situation can happen if the student is down the hallway and it's the maintenance, it could be the dietitian, cafeteria, whomever it is, but it's how do we all address it, right? And so, I constantly hear social emotional learning, we're doing social emotional learning, but apparently I don't see how we're doing it. So, go ahead, if you can show me.
Well, I wanted to just like really go off of what Mr. Soto said, absolutely, positively, it's not a single place, it's not a single point in time. What we talked to a lot of the teachers about and what a lot of the teachers said to us when we were doing this research as part of our working group was, they just want time to develop relationships with their kids. And there's so much pressure to get through the curriculum, to prepare for the next test, to take time out for the next test. I don't, I can't speak to other schools, but I know from my colleagues at Holyoke High, teachers and kids are standardized tested out. And it takes so much energy. And, you know, I co-teach a 10th grade biology class, and kids come in the door and they have needs. And, and as the main teacher is teaching, I am walking around hugging kids, whispering in their ear, letting them know that they're okay, asking them what I can do, taking a walk, taking a lap. And that's, to me, what social emotional learning is. But every classroom doesn't have the two teachers that I have in my bio class. And we just don't have time in the day to make those relationships with every single student. And that's, comes back to, you know, teacher retention and people staying in the school because if I saw you last year, I'm going to be able to connect with you again this year. And it comes back to, if I'm able to go home and give my kid, my own kids, some of my energy and some of my love, that I'm going to come back to school the next day and be a better teacher for the kids that I'm responsible for here. It's just all so related. But I agree, social emotional learning is like this catchword. What it really means is connecting tightly with your kids and having time to do that, whatever that looks like.
And it's also about building trust.
Yeah.
Right? And so, it goes back to, if we're, if everything is about that it's got to be according to, you know, a teaching moment, then you're actually missing the whole point because it's about developing relationships. Imagine if I just went into each of my patients' homes and just been like, hi, here's your medicine, bye.
Yeah.
That's not even building a relationship. On the contrary, you know, if they see me out in the community, they're like, hey, Mildred, they even think I'm a doctor. I'm like, yeah, no. But that's the most important thing, is building the relationship, knowing the child and knowing the triggers. Because if you can beat the trigger, you can get to the child to help them learn how to regulate themselves and be able to calm themselves to kind of pass off on actually escalating. And that's why I always say, safety plans need to be developed, and there should be a crisis plan that is created with the parent and the student. And to this day, is that part of the IEPs. Not all students have it unless the parent has asked for it. I know that for each of my children, when they've had it, I've created it because it's very important.
Ms. Williams?
Um, I'm sorry, no, I'm confused, yes, but I'm staring at, I'm staring at Ellie. Ms. Wilson, excuse me, Rosalie, you're after Ms. Wilson. My apologies.
So, a couple of things I just want to bring up. Mildred, in order to have a 504, you need an area of disability. So, that's a key criteria for a 504. And one of the critical pieces that more and more 504 teams, special ed teams are wrestling with is the determination of social maladjustment versus an emotional disability. That is a hot topic, let me tell you, because there's, there's, there are more and more, I'm going to be very honest, socially maladjusted students than students who have an emotional disability. So, a social maladjustment is not a criteria under federal government for a disability. So, I just wanted to clarify that. The next thing is, I can let you know that in the high school I work at, we added a second assistant principal this year based upon what we were seeing with our students and how the assistant principal was not able to effectively work with students, not just manage the moment, but effectively work with students. So, that's something I think that we as a district can be looking at is having more staff in order to help students, which in turn will help our educators. The last thing is, I just, I want to cry, that there's not time in our day to connect with our students. That is the first thing students need to feel in order to be available for learning. They need to have a connection with their educators in order to be available to learn. And if we are so focused on drilling academics and not making these connections, we will never see improvement with our students. Finally, I am going to ask that the trials curriculum be presented to a student, to a school committee meeting so we understand a high overview of what that curriculum entails. Thank you.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Right now, I'm very happy. We've had a lot of meetings, but this is one of the best. I am so happy that we're having this discussion tonight. I've always said, I had buttons about five years ago made up, if you mess with kids, you mess with me. First of all, you have to be friends with the children. They need to know that adults care about them. It doesn't matter whose children they are. Even on my block, my neighbors, they love me, the kids. If kids love you, you in, because a lot of times, kids don't trust you, they're not sure who their friends are. So, but they, Ms. Tensley-Williams, they love me, I'm not trying to be great and all that, but if teenagers love you, you're in. Be their friends, first of all. You got, first of all, they have to trust you before you can even talk to kids. And so, my kids are old, they're in their 50s, but it was tough, I was a single mom, and we made it, it was a hard, it was tough, but we need to be friends with the children. And all the kids on the block belongs to me. I don't care if it's Sullivan School, all the way up to Dean, these are my kids. So, they have to know that we care about them. And I'm loving this meeting tonight, I could, I could cry, but I'll contain myself. Thank you guys for coming.
Dr. Rivera-Cologne?
Thank you so much, and I don't want to take too much time. I do wholeheartedly agree with a lot of, all of the things that my colleagues have said so far. I just want to add something in there where a lot of what I'm hearing, based on the recommendations, requires more people, requires staffing, requires more bodies in the building. We are having trouble filling in positions that we have already established that we needed as part of the strategic plan, as part of our social emotional learning, as part of our special education, all the students that we have to better serve them. If our answers are, we have to hire more people, and we haven't had been able to even close the gap on all the hiring that we need to do, that is not going to be an effective solution for next year or the year after. I urge the team to also think about, and this goes beyond just the retention task force, which you have done an amazing job of putting all of this together, and it's the reason why I can't even talk about it, because you did all the work. And we're thankful for that. But we need to be thinking creatively outside the box, doing a resource assessment. What do we have that we can do now? So, that way, as we really look into the future and we do want to have more people, what are we doing for our kids today? What are we doing for the students now? Because those students are here now, and they can't wait until you hire all the people who are needed. So, it's not an either-or, it's an and, right? Like, what can we do now with what we have? And then, how can we help the teachers feel heard and valued now? And not when we actually get all the people that we hope we can get? Because that's, that has come up as solutions for other things, but we still don't have the people, the staffing, it's a really big issue so far. Thank you.
Mr. Willihan?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, it was well-done. Just want to ask Mr. Soto if he could just remind us of some of the benefits that we've done for the, for the teachers the last year or so in terms of the bonuses and retention bonuses. Thank you.
Thank you for, for asking. You know, one of the things that I appreciated about this process is that I was regularly kept in the loop throughout the process and, and I, no, I will say, we haven't waited on implementing some of the, like, as we were hearing things, we were actively thinking about, okay, we're hearing these things, what can we do? We heard about time, right? So, one of the things that we did in December, I shared a message with the community, I shared a message with the school committee, we made adjustments to, to time and, and teachers having the professional courtesy to be trusted to do the work and not have to stay. So, we had given back some days that, that teachers were required to stay before or after school in K to eight. We made adjustments to that in response to what we were hearing. We, we heard about appreciation, so, you know, we've tried to make efforts at the district level and school, school level to recognize teachers for good work doing. We've done, you know, we did wellness bonuses that, that, that's, you know, I don't know a district around here that was doing that. And yeah, it was a small, it was a thousand dollars per, per staff member, and that's not going to fix things. Like, I don't want to sit here and say, but what I want to say is like, as we were listening and as we were hearing some of the concerns, we, we, we committed to like, here's what we're doing in the short term, and, and once this report, before this report is released, these are some things that we can do right now around the student behaviors. We just shared with the school committee a reset that took effect in February, and we did, we did see a significant drop in February in, in the amount of referrals since that reset was implemented. So, there's things that as we're hearing, we're implementing, but there's also, you know, we just got this, these recommendations, the heavy lifting and the important work that has to happen between now and May is like, let's be realistic, what, what can we do now? What can we do next year? And what do we need to start working on and building for, for future years? I don't think any of this is going to be like more staff. Dr. Rivera-Cologne, I don't know any recommendation in here that is like stating more people, but like, you know, our budget can't support more people, and you're right, we had, you know, we've had 70 vacant, teacher vacancies all year. It would be, you know, we're not going to throw funding at creating more positions and, and like pray that like we can fill them. We're looking at a $4 million, you know, budget deficit for the upcoming year that we have to close, so like, we're not even in a position to, to add more positions. So, that isn't something that, you know, that, that we're thinking in terms of strategies. We've looked at those strategies, we've done root cause analysis, and the next step is, is for our leadership team to, to start planning and designing, what can we do now and what, what are we looking to, to build out in the future?
May I assume that you were all set because I had you next? Okay. Thanks again, you guys, for coming. I really appreciate your last comment about standardized testing. Clearly, I was shocked that your entire report didn't talk about testing. So, for you to say that, it leads me to say, why, why is it not discussed in your report at all? I find it hard to believe that it didn't possibly come up in this retention work group. You know, I think it's important to note because as a district that is so focused on MCAS, it drives a lot of our day-to-day activity, and our students miss out on time on learning with all of the time we spend on testing. We've had a wonderful report and survey done by Mr. Kennedy that he did here at the Dean Campus that surveyed his 11th grade student colleagues, and it was so enlightening. And I hear you talk about it and your, which you said your colleagues at Holyoke High are focused on it. We talk about it all the time, but what are we going to do about it? When are we going to stop having so much ANET and STAR and teaching to a test? Like, he just said we have some event happening to help their 10th graders prepare for the MCAS. Like, come on, if we want to have a healthier district, we need to stop focusing on testing. So, I'll just start with that. Going to priority two, sub-priorities and strategy two, and all this talk about social emotional learning, and to Ellie's comment about the social deficiencies, which we know heightened with COVID, with... which we know heightened with COVID, with children missing out on that opportunity to engage with their peers. What I didn't hear any talk about was art, music, recess. All of those things that we know are key strategies that help improve students' social and emotional outcomes. Because like Mildred said, it's not about a structured criteria and how you learn to be socially and emotionally healthy. So, music can provide students with a creative outlet to express their feelings and emotions, while allowing them to explore their identity and make sense of their expressions. Through engaging in musical activities, children learn to trust their own abilities and build their own unique sense of self. Play is vital to kids' building, play is vital in building kids' social and emotional skills, especially in unstructured play sessions like recess. These play settings give students a place where they can practice social skills with their peers in real time, allowing them to develop essential skills like collaboration and communication. Art, art education has an important role to play in social emotion development, in part because arts education is commonly believed to provide different ways of accessing and developing social emotional competence. Empathy, perseverance, self-awareness. This is in case of other academic areas. Like, why aren't we talking about the fact that we, as a district, have moved away from having art curriculum, music curriculum, and more time for recess? We want input on this? I, that's my input. I want to see art. I want to see music. I want to see it not just in K to eight, but also in the middle school. We have such amazing programs at the high school. And one of the things we worked on in our middle school collaborative study team was ensuring that our middle schools were providing pathways to all the different academies we have at Hoyokai. We're not feeding the theater program at Hoyokai. We're not feeding the band program at Hoyokai. We're not feeding media arts at Hoyokai. Let's be real about what we're offering our students at the younger levels to be able to feed into those programs at the high school. So, all of this feeds back to social emotional learning. It's such a focus. Why aren't we focusing more on arts and music and recess, which we'll talk about further in the meeting? And then the other thing I wrote down, you talk about student triggers, right? And like, getting to know your students' triggers, testing, as with Evan's wonderful survey he did, and how much social and emotional stress and triggers testing is for students. You could be an A-plus student, but skip school on a test day because they can't handle the stress of the test. So, I would love us as a district to really look at what we're doing around standardized testing and start to reevaluate that. You know, we want to have all these fixes and all these Band-Aids, but we're not doing at the ground level what can be done to help our students have a happier and healthier day at Hoyokai Public Schools. So, I thank you all again for your presentation. I don't see any more comments. So with that, we will move on. Thank you all for coming. Next is a yonder bag update. Dr. Caballero had asked for this. So, Mr. Soto?
Yeah, so included in your packet, we, we provided you with an update. We reached out to the, the schools that actually have the yonder bag pilot program in there. And I think the, the biggest impact that the yonder bag pilot has, has done i- is, it just normed that, like, cell phones aren't going to be used during the school day in classrooms. You know, not all students are using them. Like, we, we find that, you know, students report that they don't have a phone, but they actually do. But, you know, one of the things that it is norming is that cell phones are not, are not to be used in school and in classrooms. So I think that, you know, schools have expressed that, that, that it has accomplished that. Obviously, this is the first year of, of, of the pilot. So, you know, to sit here and expect that 100% of the students are complying with the yonder bag policy is just like, it's not realistic. Some schools have, have actually experienced issues. So, when, for example, we're, we're, we're finding a lot of phones, Hoyokai specifically. And they do, you know, they announce or do random searches because they, they're seeing, like, a lot of kids. Not random, but like, on Friday, we're going to do, we're going to check everybody coming through the door to make sure. That, that has been a strategy that has been used to discourage, to encourage students to use their yonder bags and discourage them. But like, the, the feedback that we got from the high schools, like, when we do that, it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of time to get, you know, 900 kids through the door and, and go through the process of, of checking to see if they have a yonder bag or not. All of them expressed, like, you know, all the schools expressed, like, you know, the, the pilot, while it, while it could be tweaked and, and like, we need better support, for example, like at the high school. We, we could look into, there's actually not metal detectors out there, but there's, there's, there's things that just check for phones only, not weapons or anything like that. You know, or like, if they need additional equipment to help with those days. It's, that's just a tool, right? Like, the, the goal is to have less students using phones in the classroom. Some communities don't use yonder bags. Some of them go to a, like, a safe place, right? In the classroom where they put, what I like about, or, or what, what the team liked about the yonder bag as a tool for, to enforce no phones in classrooms, is that kids have the ability to keep their phone on them. Some of these phones are, like, let's keep it real, like, some of these phones are a thousand dollars, right? And, and to sit here and say, like, oh, I'm going to put it in this cubby in a classroom full of 25 kids, there's, there's risk associated with that. And students might feel like, I don't trust it. Like, this is, this is my phone. And so what I like about the, the yonder bags themselves is that kids actually have their phones on their person. And there's not that, like, risk or liability that they're going to be losing them. You know, how, how, I think the, part of the reason this came up was because there was a huge spike in, in confiscation. When we shared our referral data, I think that's the trigger that said, hey, like, there's a lot of confiscations going on as a referral code. Does the yonder bag have anything to do with that? We'd like to get an update on that. So that's how we're providing an input. Yeah, like, the, the confiscations is a result. The increase in confiscations is a result of the yonder bag implementation. So, we ask schools, and on average, I, I'd say, each, each campus is experiencing about 10 to 20 phones a day, where like, they're finding, you know, the, the kid walks through the door, do you have your yonder bag? No, okay, let me get your phone. We'll give it to you, give it back to you at the end of the day. Or like, no, I don't have my phone. And then you, you see them throughout the day actually using it. Those get, the phones get taken away, put away. If it happens a few times, we just enforce the procedures that, that we have attached and that have been vetted through the committee. Where we, you know, a phone, you know, if it happens a few times, like, we're calling home and saying, hey, Mom, hey, Dad, you got to come pick up the phone and let's have a conversation with your, with your child about, like, you know, not, not using the yonder bag. So, at this point, like, I don't, you know, one of the things that, that we're exploring, or not exploring, one of the things that is being recommended is that we, we continue the pilot for another year because of the impact that it has had. Like overwhelmingly, all principals reported that we see less students on their phones in class. And, and that's a positive thing. That's a good thing. You know, there, there is, they have changed their pricing structure a little bit. We used to lease these. But, you know, I, one of the recommenda-, what's being recommended to me is that we continue with the pilot for a year. They get better. Like, if, if Hoyokai is having issues with those days, is there support that we can provide or equipment that we could provide to make that process quicker? And then, you know, it could be evaluated again, whether or not we, we do away with those bags and, 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 you know. I don't think anybody says, like, hey, we should just allow phones in classrooms. Everybody's like, no. Yonder bags is just a tool to do that. Folks are recommending, like, that we, we continue with another year of the pilot and, and just get better at it. And then reevaluate next year.
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Wilson had her hand up first, and I'll call you second. Ms. Wilson?
So, I, I'm trying to understand this, because in one part of, you said that we're doing searches. And then later on, in our comp, in our material, it says, unlike other area schools, HPS will not initially implement bag searches and metal detectors for students who report not having a phone upon entry to the school. So it appears that we're not following our procedure.
No, that's so, what, essentially what's happening, so Central, Central High School, their, their policy is that every kid walks, when they walk into school, they walk through a metal detector. And, you know, if they have their phone, it goes in a pouch.
Right.
And, and they can go through a separate line. If they don't have a po- pouch, they walk through metal detectors. We're not doing that every day. That's not something that we're doing. We are, you know, occasionally throughout the year, we are, you know, using that as a strategy. Like, all right, on Thursday, we're going to, we're going to go through that process. We don't have metal detectors per se that, like, kids walk through. We have wands where their bags are searched. What, what was expressed is that when we do that, it's, arrival is, is, is very, especially at the big campus, at the North Campus where there's so many kids, you're essentially losing 40 minutes in the morning, trying to, trying to do that. So, the high school expressed, like, you know, look, if we're going to do this, like, we need a little more, like, we need to explore an easier way to get kids through the door when we're, when we're doing something like that.
Right, but, but you're not, you didn't speak to the fact that in our procedure, it says we will not implement bag searches, and yet we are.
Random. So like, it's not like we're taking, like, picking and choosing. When we do it, we do it, like, everybody walks through the door and their bag gets checked.
So I think our procedure needs to be updated, because if I was a parent reading this, I would think that we are not doing bag searches, and yet we are.
Can you, can you, or, I don't know if we take this conversation offline, or you point me?
It says it right in the one, two, three, four, the fifth bullet down, the second sentence. Unlike other area schools, HPS will not initially implement bag searches. So, while we're in a trial period, I think that's considered initial. And that we are doing bag searches. I think that's something that we need to update the procedure and notify parents that that is a possibility.
I think, I think we need to clarify this. So, you're, you're absolutely right. We probably just need to clarify this. The intent of that is that unlike other, the intent is exactly what I'm trying to tell you. Okay. Noted, and I will fix that.
Should that get sent to policy for review, or no? I would say it should. Sure. And that's where the change can happen, and then it gets recommended back to us, right?
Sure.
I mean, so I'll entertain a motion to refer that to policy. Thank you, Mr. Willihan. Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Any further conversation? Seeing none? All those in favor?
No, we have to do a roll.
Roll call. Did you have a comment, hon? No. Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Soto?
Mayor Garcia. Ms. Brunel.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams. Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
Dr. Caballero.
See.
Mr. Willihan.
Yes.
Mr. Colomore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes. Dr. Caballero, did you have comments?
No, I, I wanted to thank Mr. Soto for the clarification. Thanks.
And then, the only thing I'll add is, I think if we do adopt it further moving forward, we need to take into consideration watches and headphones, because the yonder pouch doesn't interrupt your signal. So your pouch, your phone can be in your pouch, but if you're wearing an Apple Watch, you're getting all your messages on your Apple Watch. And if you have, you know, Apple headphones in, you're getting everything there as well. So, just wondering, like, if, if staff is finding that as an added distraction. I know I've gotten some texts from my own, and I'm like, what are you? And she's like, I'm on my watch. I'm like, don't do that. Like, shut off your Wi-Fi or your abilities. So just, you know, thinking ahead. And I'm just curious if it's something that we need to think about, if, if staff is seeing as, as it's a concern moving forward, so.
Yeah, I think we got to get this right first. Like, how do we make, how do we reduce the amount of phone use first? And, and, and support schools who are implementing this? And if we choose to continue with this pilot beyond next year, you know, maybe expand it when things get better. Right now, you know, right now, not every student is doing it.
Yeah.
Right now, like, I would probably venture to guess, like, this is just a guess, that like, 30% of the kids that have phones are actually using the yonder bags right now. The rest are hiding it, which is fine. Like, I'm o- I'm okay with that, right? You know, I have, I had a mentoring session on Friday, and one of my mentees was like, Mr. Soto, check this out. And I'm like, really? Really, J.C.? That's not his real name. But he definitely turned red and was like, oh, I probably shouldn't have shared this, right?
All right. Thank you so much. Moving on to lunch and recess, that's you as well.
Yeah, I think the, the request was to, to share with the school committee the, the schedules for lunches. You can see here that no school has less than a half hour for lunch and recess. So some schools are doing 15 minutes and 15 minutes. And some schools are actually doing 20 and 20. Some schools, one school even is doing 30 and 15. So, we provide guided, provided guidance to the principals. They developed their schedule. You know, with Ian White specifically, because that's why the conversation came up. You know, I did respond to the, the parent group. And like, you know, that, that's something that at the school level, like, if, if Amy, you know, I asked them to work with Amy, and if, if she can make that work for the school. What we can't do is, so I'll give you an example, like, Sullivan is a school that has a lot of kids in a small lunchroom. If we forced this policy onto them, that means that some kids will be eating lunch at 9:45 in the morning, and some kids won't be eating lunch until, like, 2:00, right? Like, because if we want to have those longer lunch periods, it means we got to, you know, like, that it's going to, it's going to affect the, the first lunch and the last lunch. So like, the, the argument will be made for families that, like, my kid is eating lunch way too late. Or, my kid just got to school an hour ago and he's already eating lunch. So, for, you know, I think that this is something that we provide principal autonomy on, based on, you know, based on like, that, the size of the building, the size, the, the size of the cafeteria, the amount of students, like, when they're building their operating plans and their schedules, like, what makes the most sense. I'd love for every school to be able to have at least 20 minutes for lunch and at least 20 minutes for recess. I would love that. But we, I don't think that we can force that onto a school without considering the impact of that change, right? The, the example, like, I'm going to, I'm going to reiterate, like, a kid showing up at 8:30, and then first lunch period being at, at, you know, 9:55 or something like that. Because we, you know, because we want to increase the, the lunches. So, there's the information, and I'll entertain questions.
I'm just going to say, and then I'll pass it over to Ms. Wilson. We have a policy in the district under wellness, and it says that students will be allowed 20 minutes from the time they sit down to eat their food.
Yep.
So what I want to know is at what point in time did we decide we're just going to throw away our policies and not look at them and construct a lunch schedule that's not within our current policy? That's all I want to know. We have, what do we have policies for if we don't follow them?
I'll, I'll get you the updated wellness policy, but it's not, it's not on that MASC list.
This is the Hoyokai Public School School Committee.
That's the school committee policy. And as, as you guys all pointed out, many of those policies are, are old.
So we have an updated one?
Yeah, we have an updated wellness policy.
And can you send us a copy of it?
Yes.
And does it, what does that say for lunchtime?
It doesn't say, it, it does say 20 minutes for recess is recommended. And it doesn't say anything about sitting down, like, 20 minutes after sitting down. But I'm happy to share the, the wellness policy.
And when was that policy adopted?
I can get you that information as well.
Ms. Wilson?
So first of all, I'm, I'm, I don't even know the right word. If there are any policies that have been created that supersede a documented school committee policy, that should be made aware to every single school committee member. We should not be hearing about this, because according to our laws, if a parent is looking for a policy, this is the policy they are looking at. This is the legal policy for lunches. Not only does it say they have 20 minutes- Not only does it say they have twenty minutes after sitting down for lunch, they said. The, the policy says lunch should be scheduled between eleven AM and one PM when possible. So I, I, I have to say that I'm kind of sho- I, the word is shocked. I'm shocked. That there is a policy that supersedes the legally adopted school committee policy that our parents refer to. I am shocked by that. And I would like to know if there are any other policies. That have been put in place that supersede the adopted school committee policies.
Ms. LaFave?
So with that, I'm gonna put in a motion that any policies that have been created. During receivership. Which was not with the school committee. Um, be referred to the policy subcommittee for review. Because it is true, it should be even on the website, um, and access for anyone in the public. Then um, families to be able to access the, the policies online. So the fact that we have those things and it's, it's a discrepancy to what we have, even though they are old. Um, and they haven't been updated, it's the current most up to date. You know, that technically we have there. Um, so that's my motion, is any policies created. While under receivership, so from two thousand fifteen to present. Be referred to the policy subcommittee for review. And then, because then they would end up have, having to go under the letters. That they would fall under. Um. In our policies.
I second that.
Motion made by Ms. LaFave, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion on the motion? I just. Okay, I just. I'm. It's just so frustrating, because so much of what we do here is reflected on us as a body, and it's not done by us as a body. In some ways, shapes or forms, so like. How many policies have changed since receivership that we don't even know about? Mister Colomore, did, do you have a comment during discussion? So currently, the district has a policy online, a wellness policy, and so. The presentation is about lunch and recess, and within our wellness policy, that's posted online. According to what's posted online, the district is violating our policy, but apparently there's a new policy.
What I wanted to get at is, uh, the principals are saying. We would have to start at nine thirty in the morning and not have lunch till one o'clock in the afternoon. Well. Are we looking at?
So as much as I respect where your question's coming from, it's not discussion to the motion? So let's do the motion, and then I will let you come back with your comment, okay? Okay, was your discussion on the motion, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Williams?
Sorry, it was about to Mister Soto, but I'll ask after.
Okay, okay, so on the motion then, uh, roll call because we do have Doctor Rivera Cologne online?
Mayor Garcia. Ms. Brunel.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Here. Uh, Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mister Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
See.
Doctor Rivera Cologne.
See.
Doctor Caballero.
See.
Mister Wellahan.
Yes.
Mister Colomore.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson.
Yes. Thank you, the motion's unanimous. Mister Colomore, now you can finish your question. Thank you.
Question I'm looking at is. We're all talking about the time limit for going to lunch. But is anyone? In your office looking at expanding the lunch? Period, not the lunch period, but the lunch, uh. Rooms. For example, uh, this room can only handle twenty people. Well, we can't, we couldn't have a meeting if we couldn't have that. But we cannot have small lunch rooms to accommodate the students. Could we look into? Building, expanding our cafeteria?
Um, no one is looking into expansion of cafeterias. I mean, you gotta think of the history here, right? We took elementary schools and made them K eights. We, you know, we. Took elementary schools and, and have them as middle schools. We've had different grade configurations, you know, over the last many, many years, um, in Holyoke, so. Um, you know, I think what, when we provide guidance to principals on, on their schedules, they. They put their best foot forward to make sure that they're, they're doing right by kids. Um, and. You know, it's not a principal that's saying, you know, uh, we gotta start lunch. Um, maybe that was a. Slight exaggeration for me to articulate to you all. Why we, why it would be hard to just say, yeah, let's, let's increase the lunch periods, like, you have to factor those things in. It, um, when, when you're creating a lunch schedule, like, the, how early lunch starts, how late lunch starts. And how long it is goes, plays into like, what, when, you know, when a principal decides. Like I said. Like I said to all of you, one of, um, one of the things I'd love to do is make sure there is a lunch period of twenty minutes and a. Recession of, of twenty minutes and, uh, I, members of our team are actually working. On a schedule for next year to be able to provide that like directive to principals, but then. Then uh, create the opportunity for them to, to express to us if, if they're doing something less than that. In elementary and middle school, uh, uh, articulate a reason why, a, a reason why that's not possible, so that we can. Have that dialogue. So if, for example, a, a principal's like, yeah, Anthony, like. If I do twenty minutes of lunch and twenty minutes of recess, like, this is the implication, this, you know. Students are gonna be eating too early or eating too late, and then we have to solve that issue. Um. But the, the guidance that, that I'd like to provide to principals and, and that our academic team is working is to make sure that. That there is a tw- at least a twenty minute lunch period and a twenty minute. Uh, recess, and that if, if that's not possible, that they, they talk to us about why that's not possible.
Are you all set?
No, uh. Are we, Aaron, I'm, I'm not sure if someone's discussed this at all in building the new Peck School. Uh. Have they planned for a hundred and fifty students to have a only two lunch periods in a school?
Five hundred and fifty students, um.
Five hundred and fifty students.
Well, we certainly don't have a schedule for the school yet, um, but in theory. All of the wonderfulness of building a new school is to ensure that it can accommodate the students that it's going to house, right? You know, um, we have, I'm not gonna say Sullivan is overcrowded, but we have a lot of students there right now.
Yeah.
You know, and so the new school shouldn't have problems because the cafeteria is humongous. I mean, so the cafeteria has a, a movable wall that divides like the gym space. So that way for big community events, you can host big community events there. So you know, there, there's. Modern buildings and modern spaces will be more accommodating and more adjustable, just like I assume our dean camp is here has. An, an easier flow of lunch, because they have a huge cafeteria. Holyoke High has a huge cafeteria. I'm sure when Sullivan was built, it wasn't built for five hundred and fifty students, so the cafeteria doesn't, isn't. You know, of the s- size it would need to be to accommodate that, that many students. I think, you know, one of the things we'll need to look at. And one of the things that I think we need to start talking about. When we look to opening Dean, or I'm sorry, the new middle school, which we haven't officially named yet, um. What are we gonna do with Metcalf? Maybe Metcalf needs to become like a pre-K case center. Maybe we need to take some of the student load off some of the K to eights. Maybe we have too many students in there to be able to provide the full range of services. Cause lunch and recess is a service, right? So maybe we have too many students, maybe that's something we need to look at. Um, you know, we're gonna have a building that's essentially planning to be vacant in a year and a half, so what do we wanna do with it, right? So maybe that's something to look into, but for right now, I would say confidently the new school will, will be able to handle its lunch crowd just. Just fine. Ms. Tensley Williams?
Usually I have easy questions. Um, this is for you, Mister Soto. Uh, you say there's a lot of students at Sullivan, um, how many? I said that. Oh, how many students?
Five twenty?
Yeah, I mean, we started with five twenty, there's, you know. There's just under five hundred now, so like.
So do you have two lunch breaks or three?
Sullivan has. One, two, three, four, five, six lunches. Um, and then I saw, oh, is your hand down, Doctor Rivera Cologne?
Uh, I, I got. Wired of waiting.
I saw you, I promise.
I just, um. The, a, a lot of people have been talking about the same thing. I just think that we shouldn't get hung up too much on the. Fifteen minutes in the middle school, because the new building will come, and that's gonna alleviate some of the Sullivan pressure. However. If there's a way of still rethinking in Adonahue, because it would be the only other. School that I see here who wouldn't be necessarily affected by the new building. So maybe something to consider in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mister Romero?
I have, um, I have two middle. Children that, um, are not too impressed by the menu. Are we able to do anything about that, just to encourage them, just to be like, cause I know they're not the only ones skipping out on lunch? So I would like to tackle that maybe a little bit. I don't know if we could.
What school?
Sullivan.
Sullivan School? Okay, so I met with the middle school cabinet. Um, middle school student cabinet, and we had a lot of Sullivan representatives there. And we, we did provide a presentation to them from our food, food service department, and they've expressed to them like. Um, you know, what they like, what they don't like, so Sedexo is gonna be working on making, I, I think right now is a quality control. The one thing, you know, even my, my mentee mentioned, like, the lunch is way better, Anthony, than it was at Peck, and. When we talked to our high school students, our high school students are like, yeah, the lunch is good. Um, and. Even students that were at Metcalf last year, but they're in ninth grade now. Uh, at the high school, they're like, the food is so much better. So like, but the, the thing is, is like, it's the same food, right? So what's going on at Holyoke High, and why is Holyoke High's food better than the food that's be, that was served last year at Metcalf? So there's some clear like quality control things that, that Sedexo has to do. And they're in the process of, you know, we did one focus group with. Middle school kids and a focus group with Sullivan kids. If you could have your kids reach out to me directly and let me know. What, what their concerns are, so that I can share that with Sedexo, and I know that they plan on doing one at Ian White. Because that was something that was brought up at Ian White by the P T L, so I wanna make sure I, I facilitate another fo- focus group over there. So that they could understand the program. Um, it, it, it's not like we could just serve whatever we wanna serve, right? It's a federal, federal program that we participate in. You gotta look at calorie count, you gotta look at. Um, you know, making sure there's like real strict guidance on what you could provide, and part of that. It, part of that is trying to find like, with this guidance, how do we create? Palatable things that kids like, right? Uh, uh, and, and that's hard, that's the balance. That's why they try different things, that's why these focus groups are important. Because if the kids are saying, I love the chicken patties, they're bussing, then like, and other kids are saying. The chicken patties are not good, like, okay, what, what's going on there? Should we explore getting different chicken patties? Is that more expensive? Okay, let's spend the money to do that, right? Um, if they're saying they don't like, you know, the, one of the things at Dunahue, they didn't, they didn't like the cheese. Cheese burritos that were being served or whatever, like, so, so Dexo needs to know that, so they could stop putting that on the menu. And on the rotation, and instead replace it with things that kids like.
Maybe it would be helpful too if the rest of the kids in the school, like, got the information that those kids provided. You know, that way they know that it's being looked into, and like, it's like a regular thing that you meet and chat about with, you know, if you. If the other kids were like, hey, some of your peers gave us this kind of feedback. Um, Holyoke High though, they, I heard they stopped putting out the cheese for the burgers, because the cheese gets tossed around. So funny.
Yeah, that did come up, and we, you know, one of the things they asked for is salad bars. And I have talked to the high school about like, we need to put back the salad bars and. And that's an adult issue, like, they gotta figure out how to manage and make sure. And I asked the students, like, talk to your friends, like, part of the reason the salad bars were, were taken away. Was because kids were like, just not, not taking care of it. So, you know, we want, I committed to the high school students that we're gonna put, you know, um. Salad bars back, so they can go get their meal, and in addition to their meal. They go and, and get a salad that is not part of the reimbursable meal, but who cares, like, some kids might want that, and. Um, the high school is gonna be working, I haven't followed up with Ms. Bouchard yet, but like, that was my directive was. Sedexo, put that back at the high school and work with the high school leadership team to make sure like. Um, whatever concerns were brought up, I think it was initially taken away because of the pandemic, and everything had to be prepackaged. So like, you can't have a serving where people are grabbing their own salad and stuff like that. But those times are gone, and kids want that back, so we're gonna put that back at the high school.
Awesome, thank you so much. Moving along, we have no new business. Ongoing business, approval of the minutes from January, uh, organizational meeting, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, make sure your microphones are on, friends, when you make.
I would love to make the motion. Thank you so much.
And seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
I'll do it.
Ms. Brunel.
Uh, yes.
Ms. LaFave. Mister Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
See.
Doctor Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
Doctor Caballero.
See.
Mister Wellahan.
Yes.
Mister Colomore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes. Forgive me, I should have done this as a package, uh, uh, I will also entertain a motion to accept the minutes from our February twelfth meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mister Colomore.
Second.
Seconded by Mister Romero. Further discussion? Ms. LaFave, sorry, I looked at you, forgot to call your name.
So real quickly, um, just a, a, a recommendation on the meeting minutes, because there was, especially on this two twelve. I noticed there was where it says, um, Ms. LaFave, motion to amend, and it says to include. It was include something, I'm gonna tell you right now. I gotta go back to it. Motion to include individually. Okay, was that the motion made to second the readings as a group package and approve these for review with the state by our receiver superintendent? Then below says motion amended by Ms. LaFave to include individually. So I think. Include individually and then write out what the full motion would be, because now I'm like, what was I talking about? Um, so imagine somebody else reading it and wondering like, what the heck is she talking about? Um, so if we can just get it more.
Yeah, I think.
Even when we're amending, so you could do like the original. Motion in like, um, like this type of lettering, just plain. And then whatever gets amended, strike out and bold. I don't know if that, if that'll help.
So do you wanna amend the minutes?
No, I mean, I'm gonna go ahead and approve now, I'm just saying, moving forward, we, you know.
Spell out, so what I'm hearing is spell out the motion in its entirety when we do that. I can provide that feedback, so. Shayna actually watches the recording, so like, that's, that's something that we can easily do, as long as we're clear here. When we write a motion, or when we speak out a motion that we, we, we say. We articulate, because li- she's watching the meetings afterwards. Um, if we don't clearly articulate what the motion is, then, then she's gonna put what, what she heard.
That's why you might not see all your comments, Mister Colomore, she can't always hear you.
Alright, uh, okay, so seeing no further discussion, uh, on the motion, roll call, please.
Ms. Brunel.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave. Mister Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams. Doctor Rivera Cologne.
Abstain.
She wasn't there.
Uh, Doctor Caballero?
Yep, got you. Dr. Caballero. Mr. Willihan. Ms. Wilson. Mr. Colomore. Ms. Wilson.
All right, updates from subcommittee. We have policy governance, um, administrative assistance to the school committee. Uh, everybody took a look at that?
So this was an update based upon, um, this was the second round going back to the policy and governance subcommittee. This was based on feedback, um, that the administrative assistant position, um, was updated based on the feedback received.
And it was just two minor changes, if I recall correctly.
Correct.
Um, all right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
To approve the assistant, administrative assistant to the school committee job posting.
The job description. I'm gonna clarify that. We're we're approving the job description.
All right, go ahead.
Isn't that a recommendation from us and the receiver then determines whether?
Correct.
Okay, so then it would be, um, a motion to refer to the receiver for approval of recommend recommendation?
Well, it doesn't have to be posted. It's not a policy.
So we're we're, this is going to be a job description for whomever.
Yeah. But not like for eternity, it's for now.
So.
I don't think we can, we can't vote on it as that's what we're saying is gonna go up.
But we're recommending, we're recommending this as the job description.
That's what I'm saying. That we can do, but your motion was to approve this for it, for us to approve for it to be posted.
Did somebody second that? Yes, right? So, all right, so can you make a motion to amend? Right?
I don't.
I don't think it was seconded.
Caught it before it even went to.
You're right. No, you caught it in discussion after it was first made and seconded.
Mr. Soto, do you have a first and a second on that?
I don't, um.
Oh.
I'm not.
All right, I, okay. I saw her hand, I figured it was in discussion. Okay, so forget that. So I'll entertain a motion. To refer. Prefer the job posting, the job description to the receiver.
Motion, yeah, she's got the motion.
Second.
Dr. Caballero with the motion. Ms. Wilson with the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Willihan.
Thank you, um. Best guess, when will we post this? Would be for next year?
Uh, we would, I would post it. I would post it, uh, immediately, like, so like, I would post it next week. And then, you know, I I wanna make sure I review it with with human resources. And then get the posting up, I am, and like, if we get a candidate that's willing, you know, will I'd obviously like somebody on the the school committee to be a part of the the process, so I can work with the the vice chair to determine that, um.
On the motion, roll call, please.
Ms. Brunel.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave.
Yes.
Mr. Romero. Ms. Tensley Williams. Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
Dr. Caballero.
See.
Mr. Willihan. Mr. Colomore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Just a note too, I'd like to know where it ends up getting posted, like.
On school spring.
That's where all jobs related to the school department get posted. And it's typically, uh, people who are looking for jobs in, um, education, look for that site, look to that site. That is the what best known site for looking for jobs, if you're in education.
This isn't really a job in education.
Well, administration and.
Well, it is, but it's not. I mean, I just feel like it should also be posted elsewhere. Right? Like, I don't know. Not like on Craigslist, but like, you know.
Once the posting gets up, like, I could share a link with all of you and you guys could post it wherever you want.
Facebook, okay, all right. Cuz I certainly wouldn't know.
But it'll be, it'll be a link to the school pr- the reason, you know, once you click on the link, it brings you to the actual place where you where you actually fill out the application.
Okay. All right, um, Ms. Wilson, if you wanna continue with, um.
Sure, I would like to take up the minutes as a package, the approval of the September and December policy meeting minutes as a package. Do I have a motion?
No, I think you're giving the motion, darling.
I give the motion then that we approve them.
Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Willihan.
Thank you, um, moving forward, can we just put the exact date of the minutes?
In the, you mean, in the, of the day of the meeting, instead of just saying policy or September? Okay. Sure, that's easy enough. All right, on the motion, roll call.
Ms. Brunel.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave.
Yes.
Mr. Romero. Ms. Tensley Williams. Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
Dr. Caballero.
They wasn't here, I think of.
Abstain?
None of us, yeah, anyway, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Willhan. Mr. Colomore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes. So the next policy review, I'd like to take these as a package, uh, the CHC, DBJ, DJA, and DH. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, receive and adopt, well, receive to accept these policy updates and refer them to the superintendent for final approval. And if so, po- and then, um, updating the website. Because they've already been, uh, posted for, uh, public comment.
Uh, seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Any further discussion? Mr. Colomore.
We can't hear him.
They can't hear you, could you just get closer to the mic?
We just turned it on.
Yeah, uh, I'd just like to find out. Is this the first posting that we have seen since receivership?
You mean our first policy review ad- adoption? Is that what you're asking?
No, no, I right here tonight, we're talking about, uh, posting for positions.
Oh, we've already moved past that, Mr. Colomore. Um, but you can finish, uh, uh, what I'm just confused as to what you're asking.
I'm trying to find out why positions were not presented to us for posting. Jobs.
Oh, well, because we're not involved with personnel. Even out of receivership, we don't hire personnel. The administrator to the sup- to the school committee is different because they work for us. But we don't hire personnel. The only job position that we even have any, I mean, obviously the superintendent and then the superintendent out of respect usually, and I'm not, I don't, that didn't mean to come off in any way, shape, or form. We we usually get debriefed on their choice for an assistant superintendent, but we don't, we don't have a vote or a say necessarily. They just like, you know, with our nod, but like, we don't actually approve it, right? So.
Who, who makes the decision whether we want the position or not?
An assistant to the school committee? Which position?
Any job.
The superintendent. So because we don't have a superintendent, our receiver does.
Who, what does that say in the rules?
In receivership, Mr. Colomore, the state law of receivership takes away all powers of the school committee slash superintendent and gives them to the receiver. That's the law. But yeah, even under local control, we hire the superintendent, but we don't hire teachers or athletic directors or custodians or anybody. Any decisions for hiring is not made through us.
Under the law, the school committee decides whether they need a s- a superintendent or not. And superintendent then recommends that we should have a an assistant superintendent.
Beyond that, that's all the say we have over staff.
That ne- that never came, as far as I know. That never came to us before about hiring a, an assistant superintendent.
We don't have a superintendent right now, Mr. Colomore.
We have a receiver.
Correct.
It's, it's the responsibility of the school committee to appoint.
Mr. Colomore, all responsibilities from the school committee was stripped away under receivership and given to the receiver.
I don't see it in M A C or anywhere else that we have taken the pro- they have taken the powers away from us for appointing a superintendent, a assistant superintendent.
Point of order.
I have, I have.
First, we're way off the topic. That, that's number one. Uh, we were right now on the policy review. I understand what you're asking about, Mr. Colomore, and I'll be more than happy to talk to you about it after our meeting. Um, prior to receivership, what school committee, um, had a role in regards to positions? But what was put forth today is because there was no administrative assistant um, job description, right? So when Liz left, that somebody else came in and started doing, you know, it was like shared work. Um, it was, um, two people have already are, have done it, and one still continues. There really wasn't a guidance to that position, what exactly we needed and and for how many hours. So in order for them to hire somebody specific to that role, that's why we referred for the policy subcommittee to develop a job description that will then get posted um, for the hiring aspect. So this job description is specifically for the person who will be taking our meeting minutes. But we typically do not do that. We do not create um, job descriptions for any position, but we did it in this case because of the concerns that we've had while we've been under receivership, and what is the role of our administrative assistant? Can we move on to the policy? So you put in that motion and I'm gonna second.
It was seconded, if I'm not mistaken. Can you tell me where we're at with that?
We're on discussion.
You're on discussion of it.
The motion was made by, uh, Ms. Wilson and seconded by Ms. Wi- Williams, I believe. Um, okay, so we're any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call. The po- as a reminder, the motion is to adopt, well, not adopt, is to
to it, to to approve the policy updates and make the recommendation for the receiver to adopt. Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Brunel.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave.
Yes.
Mr. Romero. Ms. Tensley Williams. Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
Dr. Caballero. Mr. Willihan. Mr. Colomore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Finally, I do wanna note that our next, uh, policy and governance meeting is going to be held, uh, next Monday, the eighteenth. Where? It's going to be here. Time. That's gonna be at, I believe, hold on. I'm double checking my five thirty. I am going to be sending in the, uh, agenda um, for final review, and then it is gonna be sent to everyone, um, for review. We are gonna be discussing, um, uh, this, our school district wellness program as it's been, uh, as the school committee policy that's on the agenda, the current school committee policy. We're gonna discuss lunch and recess. Um, and there's some recommendations for readings included as well as, uh, student retention policy. Uh, that's retaining students from advancing to the next grade.
All right, thank you. It's up to her. She she'll send out the agenda. Um, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Willihan, finance and operations.
Thank you, um, we met on March eighth, um, talked about, um, basically the budget deficit that that we're trying to cut. Um, an update, um, we met, um, finance, finance, finance director walked us through the budget process. Um, did, um, basically talked about the budget deficit, just in general terms. Kind of cut that. Um, a lot of the figures are unknown because of the state. Talked about, um, the current budget update on the current, uh, school budget for this year. That we're, we're working on, um, some of the long-term leases, some of the short-term leases, um. I was hoping to have a minutes, we have a minutes to approve from October of, uh, twenty-three, I was hoping to those in tonight, so I will try to get those on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you. Do you have another meeting scheduled?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you. Uh, joint city council and school committee, you guys have one coming up?
Yep, March fourteenth. Did everybody who's on the committee receive the the packet? Cuz it's this Thursday. Okay, good. Um, so the meeting's at six thirty at City Hall. And, um, I don't think you provided the, no, it's going first over to the committee. And then I'll bring forth those meeting minutes. That's it for the joint city council.
Thank you. Uh, DEI?
Can I actually, I have a question for that, um, what, did everyone get a copy of the agenda for that meeting?
Nope, I didn't.
And that's what I was asking.
So I I'm just saying I did not get a copy of the agenda for that meeting.
She asked if the members of the committee got a copy, nobody answered her.
No, cuz I thought she meant the subcommittee, I apologize. So I wanted, so to clarify, I did the, as a school committee member, I did not get a copy of that.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna send it out right now. I'm just gonna forward what, um, Jeffrey Anderson Burgos sent me. Um, as for Mr. Colomore, uh, I don't know what to say because that needs to be printed out.
That's on.
So who's gonna get that to Mr. Colomore?
I will take that on responsibility this one and only time to print it and get it to Mr. Colomore tomorrow.
Okay.
The the chair needs to be aware and they need to get Ronnie a copy.
Okay.
Um, ch-ch-ch-ch, moving along. Sorry, uh, back to DEI. Johnny Lett?
Thank you, um, it didn't make it to this meeting, so I'm gonna make sure to resend it so that we can make it to the next full meeting, which is the plan for the renaming, the possible renaming for the new pack replacement building. Um, and now we have the minutes from the December meeting, so we can go ahead and approve those. Thank you.
I thought you sent them.
We have our.
Never mind, I'll talk to you later. I thought you sent them, okay.
Yeah, I I thought so, but if it's not here, it's fine. Um, I have, and we have our next meeting tomorrow. And on the agenda, there's only just the update about DEI efforts in the district and our approval of the last meeting minutes. Um.
Location and time?
So it's gonna be at Central Office, six P M. tomorrow.
Thank you. Um, local control isn't, uh, meeting yet. I figure we'll connect after my Zoom on Friday.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect.
Did we accept the meeting minutes, the December meeting minutes from DEI?
Oh, your meeting minutes are there. Do you wanna go, do you want us to accept those, to do those now?
Yes, those are ready. What wasn't there was the plan for the renaming that we will need it for discussion as a full committee.
Okay, so do you wanna make the motion to approve your minutes?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Brunel.
Yes.
Ms. LaFave.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams. Ms. Tensley Williams.
Si, senor.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Si.
Dr. Caballero.
Si.
Mr. Wellahan.
Yes.
Mr. Collmore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes. Um, I just also wanna just make a quick comment. Um. Just reminder that Alex, what's his full name? The gentleman who's doing subcommittees?
Uh, Alex Martinez is taking minutes after the meeting are recorded. That's, that's what he's doing.
Okay.
Um, Shayna is, is supporting, developing the agenda, getting it posted and doing all that work, so. Uh, um, Alex, what we've agreed with him is that outside of the school day, he's gonna be, you know, because he does work for us. He will support writing the minutes um, after reviewing the, the meetings online. And then we'll get them shared with the chair so that they can review and make sure they're okay before they get put on the full committee agenda.
Okay, thank you. Um, chairs of, of subcommittees should make sure they take note during minute. During regular meetings, if something is referred to your subcommittee. Um, especially until we have a full-time administrative assistant to track those things. Um, and then obviously making sure you're taking down the language and who made the motion. Cause they should have the opportunity to discuss what they're referring to your committee at your committee meeting when it comes on the agenda. Second to that, I would say you need to be notifying people of your meetings at least a week in advance. And agendas really should try to be done a week in advance. They have to be posted to the city website. A minimum of forty-eight hours, but you know, a lot of people have a lot of work to do outside of just this. So, you know, us included, obviously everyone. So with that in consideration. We have deadlines for our full committee meeting, you know, agendas and. Not, we don't have an established deadline for subcommittees, but I would suggest that you try to have your stuff in a week in advance. Um, so that way the people behind the scenes who have a lot of other work can have their, have time to get your agendas created for you. Back to you for approval, you know, um, changes made that are necessary. And still out to the committee and, and publicized in uh, full time. So. That being said, tomorrow would be your deadline to get things to me for the um, March twenty-fifth meeting if necessary. Um, alright, moving along. Um, most of this is in your packet as FYI. Um, attendance data, uh, referral and discipline data, staffing update, middle school building um, update. And then out of state field trips. Do you have any questions or concerns on any of that, Ms. Ms. LaFave?
You know I'm gonna keep digging onto this uh, discipline and referrals data. So you did, um. So you had made a comment that things had, had gone down quite significantly. Um, when you rolled out something in January, but when I'm looking at these numbers, I don't see a significant.
I said February.
February, so I don't see a significant drop. Um, if I'm looking now from February twelfth's meeting, the total number of referrals and that report was eight thousand thirty-one. We are now at March twelfth. I don't know when the final number would have been, the final date, but we'll go up until today. It's eight thousand seven hundred and forty, that's an increase of seven hundred and nine referrals. External suspensions uh, went from six forty-nine to eight oh five, that's a hundred and sixteen. Number of students referred, um, fourteen sixty-two this month, fifteen thirty-two. So we're looking at seventy and it actually passed our school year twenty-three. Um, and then the number of students suspended, we, um, number of students suspended, not the total number of suspensions. We went from three forty-five to four sixteen. That's seventy-one numbers, seventy-one uh, students. Um, an increase. Now, what I did notice is that the referrals by grade graph. There was no change from last month's meeting to this month's meeting, so it doesn't appear like that was updated with the changes. From up here. You know that blue and red graph?
Um.
This one.
Yes, what about that one?
There, there's no change from last.
Yeah, it's a comparison to last year and, and current year-to-date, so.
Oh, no, there was a change from the January to the February, but not from February to March.
The blue is F Y twenty-three, I'm thinking.
Right. Yep, that, that one's the blue. Now, if you look at the red, the same numbers that I had in my February packet. February twelfth packet is the same numbers that I have with my March twelfth packet, but it doesn't reflect. All of these changes that we have. So if we're looking at referrals, we had seven hundred and nine extra referrals in a month. Some of these numbers should have changed to show, um, reflect those changes. Um, I'm not sure how that works, who does it. Um, nor the referral by type. Um, was, um.
Yeah.
Was changed. Those numbers are the same as.
The twenty-three column is, should be the same.
No, but even our, I was comparing both, even though, you know, I, it's twenty-three, never gonna change, but my twenty-four. So if I'm looking right now at February twelfth, this is my report from February twelfth.
Yep.
Battery non-staff members, three oh three. What do we have for March? If we're looking at referrals by type.
If you're asking for a breakout by month, then like.
No, it's these numbers. We're putting in the numbers. According. Good. If, if there's increases.
Yeah, so, um. December, yeah, it's, it's cumulative numbers, so if, if we're, if we're looking at December, right? In December, there were a total of twenty-five and then from December to January, there were twenty-six. So, uh, that bumped it up to two fifty-one and then January to February, there were fifty-two. Um, that bumped it up to three oh three and then uh, in the month of February, there were only sixteen. So you can see that the number from before the reset was fifty-two for that month. And then it's sixteen for uh, February to March. Um, in the, in the, in the packet, uh, Mildred, the uh, right before, right, right above. Where you see those slides, there's a link that brings you to a much more detailed slide and it, and it has like the comparison by month. Um, I'd be happy to sit down with you if you'd like to, to take a look at that and.
I'm just, I'm, okay, look at your page nineteen for March. Everybody go to page nineteen. Okay, let's look at battery non-staff member. What's the number that you have there? No.
I see three oh three.
Three oh three, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's March's packet that you sent us? Okay, I'm looking at February twelfth's packet, three oh three.
Mm-hmm.
Batteries.
So there were sixteen, there were sixteen.
So, and that's what I'm saying.
Be, that should, we should add sixteen to that number. You're, you're right.
And transfer, so that's all I'm saying that these numbers aren't reflecting in the referral by grade or.
Yep, so the, the link, the link has all the details.
Okay.
You are pointing out that, that the formula didn't pick up the sixteen referrals that happened in February.
Yeah, it's nothing, not even that other graph where it would be on page.
Yep, okay.
Twenty-four, it's not showing, or no, it's a different page on yours.
So Steve, that's, you know, we gotta work with Jenny when we put these. Uh, to make sure that she's taking the links, the, the, the data that we're sharing with the school committee and up. And making sure it's, it's updated. So it looks like the, this past month of February. Although it was provided to the school committee in, in a link, what was shared in the packet, that's not part of the link. Didn't include the, the, the February activity.
Now, the question is. Going on with these increases? I mean, we're gradually increasing, so as.
Yeah, I think, so, listen, what, what, what we saw in February was a significant drop in a lot of those categories. Which, if you click on that link, you'll be able to see. So, um, one of the things that we're gonna be doing is diving deep. The other thing I wanna note, um, is that last year, I think, I don't wanna say it was an anomaly, but. Um, I don't think that p- schools were being consistent in recording information in school brains. Like last year, they were, they had their own referral worksheets and one of the things like. Dr. Mahoney hammered hard into this year, you know, at the, you know, based on conversations we've had with the school committee. Is like, that needs to stop and like, everything is gonna go into school brains, which is our student information system. So you see a lot more activity this year, but part of that is because schools weren't updating school brain. They had their referral stuff, but they were using their own worksheets and then deciding like, what goes into school brains and what doesn't. Um, so we provided a lot of clarity and as part of the reset as well, like. Expectations around like everything getting into school brain, so, um, you know, this is a good baseline year. You're, you're absolutely right, like there, the referrals are, are more, like, we just talked about behaviors and, and like. You know, things, things have progressively, I wouldn't say not progressively, but since the pandemic. There's been an increase in, in, in behavior concerns, um, that, that like, we're, part of this, this process. Is making sure that we're collecting all that information and leaning in where we need to lean in. The reset was like, you know, an attempt to. To, to provide clarity. You heard the teachers talk about wanting some consistency. Um, part of that reset was to establish that across the district and we worked with schools. We worked with counselors, we worked with student support team members to develop that clear guidance across. And, you know, the data that we see in February, we see a lot of things. Um, we see some, some positive data, some positive trends. In, in February specifically, but um, I'm not gonna sit here and say like, oh, it's fixed, like, we, we did a reset and now it's fixed, like. One thing we're committed to do is continuing to look at this data and respond to it.
So, your FIAX, are they? Family access and engagement coordinators? Their role, I remember when it was first uh, rolled out at Kelly's school, when Kelly's school became a community school. Um, and they created that, it was looked at more as a, a family su- support. But not really providing resources per se, to a certain extent. So, when we're looking at increase in behaviors, right? There are programs out there that are, that can help families and it's actually free. If the student has mass health. And it's called, and it's under the Children's Behavioral Health Initiative. There's programs like the Support Network for Families of Western Mass that work with families that have, um, children. With mental health disabilities. They provide a family support specialist that not only works with the family. Um, you know, in. That can be with the education aspect, you know, being like a family partner. Um, and a, and attending the I E P meetings or any meeting that has to do with the, with the child. Being able to attend support groups for the parent. There's all different types of things. Is that something that our family access and engagement coordinators have access to those resources? That they can then provide to the families? Like, how many of them have actually been like, maybe your child, um, especially those on the spectrum, the multicultural. A service and referring for, for that. I mean, there's so much and I, and I think. We're not really providing.
Yeah.
The resources that families could be using that are actually free.
Yeah, we have a list of resources that, that like, we tried to pull together all the resources in the community available to. Um, to both students and, and families. I don't think that the family engagement coordinators themselves are like. Involved in the, you know, the, when, when, when schools need support from a family engagement coordinator, that, they would jump in, but. Um, you know, they're, they're more invol- more engaged in like attendance, so like, a, a couple of hours.
Would be one of the things where we wouldn't be landing in, into, we wouldn't have to wait till that far. And the support network is right at one eighty-seven High Street in Holyoke, right in downtown. So.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to make sure that that resource is on our resources page. That, um, schools have access to, counselors have access to, the Holyoke Hub has access to, family engagement coordinators have access to. And, um, I'd be surprised if we're not utilizing them, but, um, you know, we can look into that.
The Support Network for Families of Western Mass is located at one eighty-seven High Street in Holyoke, yep. Cause I mean, we're quick for enlasse and, and that whole C R A. Um, children requiring assistance or whatever you wanna call it now, um. This is a different route, it's more addressing the problem. If the problem is a mental health disability and not really, these are the people that have lived experience. Um, the people who work there are parents of their own. Who have suffered with mental health disabilities and the struggles that they went through. And they're just helping other families.
And I'll just make a comment about the discipline stuff too, is like, consistency obviously is key with, with discipline. Um, and I think I've said this before too, it's like, not enough communication, I think, is happening between. The disciplinary and, and home. Um. You know, like. We have student teacher conferences at most of our schools Thursday and Friday. I, I had one recently with my son's teacher and found out about something and I'm like, okay, well. Why didn't you notify me? Cause, you know, generally speaking, if you get a call from school or threaten the student with a call home. Uh, sometimes, not in all cases, but sometimes just the threat of the phone call can be enough to have that student redirect or. Or make the connection because if, if the, if the, the guardians at home aren't aware of the problem, then they can't help intervene and. As, as minor as the problem is, right, it helps prevent the, the more major problems. So, okay. Moving along, anybody else have any comments on those items? Alright, seeing none, um, out of state field trips, we have a Keene State tour, a Yukon tour. Uh, Wells, Wellesleyan, Wellesleyan? Wellesleyan? I thought there was a Wellesley, I don't, there's so many colleges. Wellesleyan University uh, tour, uh, and then student activity reports, there aren't any. Um, and then on to announcements, uh, so multi-year financial planning community meeting includes D P A C. Um, E L P A C and uh, S E P A C members, uh, Tuesday, March, that's today. Um, Holyokai Dean graduation is gonna be on Thursday, May thirtieth. I wrote down deans while they were telling us.
Yeah, Dean is Thursday, May thirtieth, Holyokai North is Friday, May thirty-first.
Okay, it says, says it right here. So while we're discussing that, do you have a budget date hearing yet? Cause we don't have a scheduled June meeting because we're waiting for those two dates and for a budget.
Yeah, we usually do the budget hearing before the last meeting in June.
We don't have a meeting because we weren't sure about graduations.
Yep, so, we, 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 we'll have to coordinate with you on like, when the June meeting is, so we can, uh. Try to meet that deadline, depending on how the, how the budget process progresses and us getting to balance. Um, we'll shoot for that date and then if we have to change it, we'll, we'll change it.
Are these that gradu- graduations gonna be outdoors? I know that.
Yes, that's the, I mean, Dean's inside and Holyokai's, uh.
Gonna be outdoors.
Gonna be at, at the football field. Um, one, one of the, one of the good things about doing it on Friday at six is. You're not finding out like, at ten in the morning that it's raining and you gotta move it inside, like, you can kinda. You can kinda see like, oh, today's a bad day, alright, like, now we have six hours. To actually plan on move, on getting the gym ready and communicating and all that. Um, that was all part of the thought process by the Holyokai leadership team to, uh, as, as a benefit to do that, so. Um, our goal is to have it outside on Friday night, May thirty-first and, and if we see that it's raining at noon, like, there'll be enough time to pivot.
Awesome. Uh, Lawrence School Site Council, Wednesday, March twentieth. Uh, you guys see all the announcements, uh, S E. Uh, you guys see all the announcements. Uh, SE PAC meeting Wednesday, March twentieth. Middle School Building Committee meeting is Thursday, March twenty-first. Um, Ho'ol School Committee meeting, oh, Monday, March, yeah, okay. Um, the only thing that's not on here, I wanted to mention a reminder for the parade. Um, it's asked that we arrive at eight forty-five, which I know sounds a little early. Uh, parade kickoff this year is at ten forty-five. It's been moved a little bit earlier. Um, we are group B. Um, it's co- Mr. Soto will have somebody, you've confirmed somebody's driving the van?
Yes, and I believe whoever needs a ride has already been called.
Okay, great, great. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Um, hopefully the rain holds out. Say your Irish blessings. It's thirty-five percent chance of rain right now. Um, other than that, I just wanna congratulate the high school basketball team on making the Sweet Sixteen for the state tournament. They played amazingly. Um, we're proud of them. Anybody else have any announcements or anything else they'd like to discuss? Ms. Wilson?
I just wanted to wish everyone who's celebrating a, um, a, I guess, I, I had it done before and I can't find where I saved it. The proper wish for a peaceful, happy Ramadan and I can't find it. So I just wanna wish everyone who's celebrating that, um, you know.
Entire Muslim community.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Can I, at the end?
This is the end.
Okay.
Jump on it before someone makes a motion to.
I have a poem, uh, it's,
Go for it.
Sending it out to the children and it's called Going to the Library. Um, excuse me, I wrote it November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at seven o'clock in the morning. Going to the library. Going to the library will not be very hard. The only item that you will need is your library card. While traveling to the library, you do not want to speed. You want to arrive on time to find the books you need. Going to the library is also for me and you. It's not just for children, it's there for adults too. When you arrive at the library, there should be no fear. It's so quiet and so peaceful. You might want to stay in there. Some might think to themselves, why these books could be my friends? This peaceful feeling I get while here, I don't want it to end. In the library, you may or may not see toys, but you cannot help but notice the quiet girls and boys. As the children in the library walk quietly down the aisles, you can see they have found the books they need by their great big beautiful smiles. So now, when they are finished acting like little scouts, they walk up to the front desk to have their books checked out. Thank you.
So I wanna send it back to, uh, Dr. Rivera Cologne because she has the proper, uh, you know, wishing people a happy Ramadan. So if you wanna share that, that'd be lovely.
Ramadan Mubarak.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll adjourn the motion to adjourn. Make the mo- So moved. Thank you, Mr. Romero. Thank you, Mrs. Williams. All those in favor? Aye. Oh, roll call.
Roll call.
Ms., Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Si, senor.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Si.
Dr. Caballero?
Si.
Mr. Wallahan?
Yes.
Mr. Colomore? Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Well, it's so far jogging or, uh, but you can do the third spot on it. It's April twenty-fifth.
So are we adjourning?
Yeah.
Motion passed.
Sorry, motion passed, meeting adjourned at eight fifty-eight P M. Thank you, everyone.